Let's call the hearing to order. Special hearing of the Montecito Planning Commission and whatever today's date is. I think it's April 27th. If you'll please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To comply with the United States of America and to the Republic which stands unwavering regardless of individual liberty and justice.
Well, that's probably a good thing, actually. Mr. Villalobos, would you like to make the TV coverage announcement and followed by the roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lumpo, San Inez Valley, and San Ria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV Channel 20. Now for the roll call, Commissioner Gottsnecker.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Burrows.
Here.
Commissioner Idelson.
Here.
And Commissioner Overall.
Here.
Thank you.
Let's see. Welcome, Ms. McGurty. You're up for our Agenda Status Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, and yes, I am backing up for Diane Black today. She's out of the office, and I'm glad to be sitting with you. We have three items on your agenda, two briefings, and a package of ordinance amendment items. Staff is prepared to proceed with all three items, and there are no changes to the agenda.
Would you also like to advise us on the projection report, please?
I'd be glad to do that. In terms of your May hearing, there are three items. That's May 25th. The first is a continuance of the BAGDISERIAN appeal, and the second is a conditional use permit for a sound wall, and the third will be a discussion of the climate action study. And those items are all set to go forward on that day. There are no items calendared yet for your hearings of July, June, July, or August.
Thank you. Mr. Villalobos, I would point out to you that our monitor here is not working. No, no, if that means that we're not-
No, we're fine.
Okay.
I'll turn it on.
Doesn't matter, just checking.
My contract says I can't work without television sign.
All right, right.
I need to have that.
The next item on our agenda is public comment, and this is a period reserved for the public to address any item that is not on our agenda. We don't believe we have any speaker slips.
Well, I don't have the box or any slip.
Okay.
So.
And I see no one waving their hand frantically, so we will call, close, public comment period. The next item is Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Mr. Idelson.
No reports.
Ms. Burrows.
I don't have, I, next time, I will have a report on a Court of Appeals case that I read that is interesting, and it reaffirmed the, that we, we don't in California have a right to review. But this court got kind of close to it and talked about spite fences and things like that, and it's, I'll bring more information next time.
Good.
That'd be interesting.
Ms. Gottsnecker, you have anything to report?
No.
Okay. I, I actually have two items to relate to the Commission. I think, as I've indicated to you all before, I was invited by the Montecito Association to, to serve as an ex officio member of their Transportation Committee, and that has been focused primarily on the 101 corridor. And this week, we had a meeting with representatives from the Supervisors Office and SB CAG. There's been a great deal of work done by the other Commissioners, I mean, the other members of the Commission, looking at alternative approaches to Highway 101 through the Montecito Corridor that wouldn't be nearly as expensive as some of the ideas that have been advanced by Caltrans, and that would probably wouldn't disrupt the community as much. And the, the goal of the meeting was to make sure that those alternatives got presented to Caltrans and potentially included in their environmental impact report that's due out later this year, probably in September. Because, as we all know, if it's not included in the EIR, there's a slim chance that you're going to get it. So, I commend the Montecito Association and Bob Short's Committee in particular for the work that they've done on that. The other thing I wish to report on, we have scheduled this year three joint chairs committee meetings, which are the representatives from the Planning Commissions and all the counties' MBARs. Commissioner Burrows attended with me at the second of our meetings this year. And there were two things that I thought that came up that you might find of some interest. The County Planning Commission, Mr. Cooney, raised the issue of the, from his perspective, of the maybe inadequacy, or at least ambiguity, connected with reports that, the minutes that come out of the MB, or the BAR meetings. We've all seen them where there are comments that are offered, but it doesn't say whether it represented one person's view or the entire review panel's position. And so we had a discussion about that, and I think it was somewhat rewarding to hear that the MBAR is using the checklist on the findings that they have to make, and that is helping us, at least, get a little bit better input. But there was some focus on making the minutes a little bit more complete, and I think if that, when that applies, it would be nice to have that. So that was a, I thought, a positive step. And then the other thing, right after our, the session, the main part of the session was concluded, I had a conversation with Ms. Black and this man, Ms. Van Mullen regarding a possible workshop for our Commission, associated with one of our regular meetings, that would focus on learning from people that do it for a living, some shortcuts and high, highlights of how you, how we should be approaching reviewing projects. And we've all been doing it for a while now, but we can always learn something. So I, I think we would welcome that. It's not on the agenda yet, but it's something that'll come up before too very long. That is correct, is it not?
Yeah.
Thank you. That concludes my, my comments on that. Next, we have the minutes to approve from the last meeting. Do any of the Commissioners have comments, or?
Mr. Chair, under approval of the minutes of last meeting?
I'll, I'll second that, but I do have a couple of minor corrections, Mr. Villalobos. It's not, I don't think it's terribly important, but under the Commissioners present, it has two chairs. You probably want to correct your template. And then I, unless my memory is failing me, I believe Dr. Russell was not in attendance at our last meeting. I think Ms. Black did the briefing on that. So I think that was it. The, the one substantive item that I thought was, let me see if I can find it here. It's on page four at the bottom, just above item number three. It says the following condition had been added as a last condition, and this relates to the Crane School master, master plan approval. It currently reads that it be, that there be a minimum nine-month quiet period or a maximum quiet period equal to the length of the previous phase of construction. The problem is with the word maximum. The intent on that was that the minimum period of time would be either nine months or the period equal to the last phase of construction. There is no maximum limit when they have to do another phase. At least, that's my recollection of it, and I did make the motion, so. Anybody have a differing memory of that?
I'll defer to the, if you make the motion.
Okay. With those corrections, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I think that that may be a public comment that just came in late after you closed public comment.
Can you read the last name for me?
Randy in Mission Oaks.
Does that relate to the ordinance?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got it for that. Thank you. The next item, Mr., Dr. Russell is here, so today you can give us the report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. I have a few things to report on the board hearings that took place since your last meeting of March 23rd, some of particular interest to you, I'm sure. Quickly, moving through some of the items. April 5th, there was to be considered the inland development agreement for Santa Barbara Ranch, and the issue of, the assignment of that agreement now that there has been a change in ownership. That was continued to the 17th of May, and there's still some disagreement among some of the parties regarding the, the status of that development agreement. There was also a, a lot line adjustment and 661 consistency rezone for the Kong property. On the 12th, there, there were two things that have now been continued to May 10th, an Evans Appeal in North County, and Chapter 25 Petroleum Code. Of some interest was the initiation of LUDC amendments to consider the allowance of utility-scale solar projects on ag-zoned land. And those initiations for those, consideration of those amendments were divided into two. Those that, projects that are greater than five megawatts and those projects which are smaller than five megawatts. We thought that it was prudent to do that because the, the projects are of such, are so different and of such different scales that it might be appropriate for one and perhaps not the other, or it might take a negative declaration for one and an EIR for the other. The larger one is being driven by a particular project, so we, we felt that it would be useful to have two different amendments considered, and that was initiated by the Board. On the 19th, and perhaps of significant interest, is the work program was considered by the Board, and the, the situation is, and they prioritized the projects, and the situation is the, and here's how they prioritize them, let me tell you how they prioritize them. There's all the projects that are going to continue, that are ongoing as we speak, and the potential new short-term priority projects are as followed, follows. Number one, winery ordinance, ordinance update. Number two, Hollister Upper State Street Streetscape Improvement Plan. Number three, Mission Hills Vandenberg Village Visioning. Number four, Montecito Design Guidelines. And number five, supplemental agricultural uses amendments. And number six, Santa Inez Valley TIP. Seven, brushing ordinance amendments. And eight, Los Alamos Parking and Pedestrian Circulation Plan. Now, what makes this interesting is, is the following. Due to the reduction in general fund target that I was given by the CEO, which, just to put things in perspective, when I got here in September of 2009, the budget that I was working with at that time had approximately $6 million of general fund. The target for next year was 4 million, so that's a 33% reduction, and that money doesn't go as far as it used to because of increases in costs. For example, salaries and benefit costs went up 25% this year alone, as projected for the next year's budget. So consequently, the, it resulted in service limbo impacts throughout the Planning Department, including long-range planning. If we were to maintain the staff that we have today, we could do everything down to the Montecito Design Guidelines and probably beyond that, to the next one, the supplemental agricultural uses amendments. However, as submitted, we will not be able to do any of this. Maybe the winery ordinance update. We've gotten a, we're going to be, going to the Board and asking the Board to allow us to accept a grant from Southern California Edison, which will give us some additional resources that are not currently in the budget that's proposed. And of course, we do not know what Board action will be on the budget that is proposed. But if the budget is approved as it is proposed, we'll basically be able to work on all the projects which are currently ongoing, and maybe work on one new one. But effectively, our ability to take on any new projects in long-range planning is severely constrained by the budget that we've submitted. And then, the last thing I'd like to mention, and this is something I think relevant to what the Chair reported on earlier, is that one of our supervising planners in long-range planning, Peter Imhoff, will be leaving the county Friday is his last day, and he will become the Deputy Director in Charge of Planning for SB CAG. So I think that's good for SB CAG, I think that's good for us as well, and it's certainly good for Peter. It's a really a great career opportunity. But we look forward to a good communication with, with him in his new role, and we wish him all the best. And that concludes my report for today. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to respond.
Dr. Russell, I do have one question related to the solar. The larger project, the five-megawatt. In the contemplation of that, is the production of energy from that kind of a facility intended to be consumed by that development, or is it a commercial development that would provide other owners and other properties?
Mr. Chair, it is strictly commercial, and the, the project that inspired this amendment is a project in Cuyama, which is about 50 megawatts, and it is, what we're told, and of course, things can change, but we're told that that is not only one of the only places in the county where you can effectively have a solar project. They have much bigger ones in San Luis Obispo, but they're out in the Carrizo Plain area where the, the conditions are, they're larger areas where the conditions are appropriate. So, but we're told that the grid, given our location at the end of the grid, that that capacity to put solar-generated electricity on the grid will be effectively used up by this one project if it is approved. But it is, as currently designed, it's simply commercial, put it on the grid, as opposed to smaller projects which might be more community-focused.
And why wouldn't that be subject to a rezone?
Currently, such solar, our zoning ordinance did not anticipate the placement of such a use on agriculturally-zoned land. So the wisdom of allowing that will now be investigated.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the Commissioners? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our standard agenda. And Mr. Villalobos, if you'd like to read the first one into the record?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Montecito Planning Commission will receive a briefing on the proposed decision-making process for the WOODL lot line adjustment.
And, Mr. Chair, Ann Almy is out of the office today at a training, so I'm going to be doing the briefing.
If I can just interrupt you, make sure that somehow I wasn't the only one. There was nothing in my, there was no staff report that I received, is that?
That's correct. We're just doing a very short presentation.
Just want to make sure I hadn't missed something here. Thank you.
As Mr. Villalobos said, the purpose of the item is to brief your Commission on the proposed decision-making process for the WOODL lot line adjustment. This lot line adjustment involves two parcels, and Julie Harris, who's the planner on the case itself, has a slide up showing the property outlined in yellow. One of the parcels, the northern parcel, is within the Montecito Planning Area and is therefore under your jurisdiction. The other parcel is within the Toro Canyon Planning Area and is therefore subject to the jurisdiction of the County Planning Commission. Staff has worked with County Council to identify appropriate processing options for this unique case, and we've concluded that there are two options available. The first option would be to take the project to both the County Planning Commission and the Montecito Planning Commission as joint decision-makers, and the project would require the approval of both Commissions. Any appeal or inconsistent decision would go on to the Board for just a final decision. The second option would be to request direction from the Board to assign the project to the county's Planning Commission's jurisdiction alone. Under county code, the Board can assign specific projects to the County Planning Commission. This would be done by placing an item on the Board's administrative agenda, and if approved by the Board, the County Planning Commission would then be the sole decision-maker. The Board could also direct that the Montecito Planning Commission provide a recommendation on the project. With regard to the proposed lot line adjustment, and of course, we're not, we don't want to get into the lot line adjustment itself at this time, but the development potential for that project, the development potential that currently exists within, within the Montecito Planning Area would be relocated to the portion of the property within the Toro Canyon Planning Area. Because the development that would result from the project would be then within the jurisdiction of the County Planning Commission, and also because staff believes it would be a more efficient process, we are proposing to request direction from the Board to assign the WOODL project to the County Planning Commission. However, we're bringing this item to your Commission to get your input on the proposed process, and we welcome your feedback.
Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chair, I suppose there may be some precedent setting here, and I, I would think that Montecito would defer to the county should the county's jurisdiction be greater in square footage and things like that. That may be a way to approach it. And apparently, there's no development proposed on the piece that is within Montecito's jurisdiction. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I, I suppose that is the, is the better result.
Is there any development possible? I realize that there's a difference between proposed and possible on the Montecito piece.
Yes, it, it is possible, but there's no development proposed on the Montecito parcel.
And would what is developable on the Montecito parcel change in any way because of the lot line adjustment?
The result of the lot line adjustment would be that the portion of the land within the Montecito Community Plan would not be developed because this lot line adjustment also includes building envelopes, and both of the building envelopes are located, would be located within the Toro portion of the property.
Well, in that case, there wouldn't be any possible development in Montecito.
As a result of the lot line adjustment. But today, there, it is possible that you could develop the Montecito parcel.
Post-adjustment, there would be no development possible in Montecito.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other, any thoughts? I would say that that makes perfect sense. Ms. Van Mullen, do you have something you want to add?
Mr. Chair, it just looked, it sounded as if we were about to conclude, so I just wanted to see if there was anyone here to speak on the process.
Quite right. Thank you. I should open it to public comment. I don't, I don't, I don't have a speaker slip. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this? I see no one, so we'll close public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we give you sufficient, let's make it official. As a Commission, we would recommend and support staff's position that the decision be, the recommendation go to the Board and jurisdiction be transferred to, totally to the County Planning Commission. Does that represent the will of the Commission? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Got off easy today. The next item, Mr. Villalobos, you want to read it into the record, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr., Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department that the Montecito Planning Commission consider the following. 11 ORD 13, 11 ORD 14. 11 ORD is to adopt a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt an ordinance mending Division 35 dot 4. Montecito standards for specific land uses, Division 35.7. Montecito Planning Commission Permit Procedures, and Division 35.1, glossary of Section 35 dash 2, the Santa Barbara County Montecito Land Use and Development Code of Chapter 35, zoning of the county code. B, 11 ORD 14, to adopt a recommendation to the County Planning Commission that they recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt an ordinance, 11 ORD 14. And to recommend that the Board of Supervisors determine that the ordinances are exempt from SECPA pursuant to Section 15061b3 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Mr. Langel, are you more or less ready to go, or do you need a couple of minutes, or what?
More or less.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Members of the Montecito Planning Commission. It's been a while since I've been before you with a package of ordinance amendments, but this is part of our somewhat routine process by which we roll up over the year a number of proposed ordinance amendments, bring them to the Planning Commissions, both your Commission and the County Planning Commission, as a package of proposed amendments. These proposed amendments address issues that have been identified through the adoption of the, of the Land Use and Development Codes. You may remember that process took several years and was finally adopted, the Development Codes in 2006, and then later on, a specific code for all of Montecito, including the coastal zone, in 2007. During that adoption process, staff did identify several issues that we felt should be addressed at some point, but in order to minimize the potential for controversy during the adoption of the Development Codes, the instruction was that we were not to make any substantial changes to those codes, and so we did more or less compile a list of things we would like to work on in the future, and we are now addressing some of those, some of the features on that list. Also, the proposed amendments before each day address issues that have been identified since adoption of the Development Codes, new emerging issues that we wish to address, as well as certain areas that have been addressed, or identified, rather. as well as certain areas that have been addressed or identified rather through the zoning enforcement efforts, things that would come up that the zoning enforcement team would like to see put into the code to make their job a little bit easier. And what's before you today also includes correcting errors that we've discovered that we made during the development, of the development codes that we're now like to So, the purpose of this hearing is for your commission to review the draft amendments, as we proposed, in regards to the Montecito Land Use and Development Code to adopt the findings and adopt a resolution to the Board of Supervisors recommending that the board adopt or approve the amendments. And in regards to Article II, because of the shared jurisdiction between the County Planning Commission and your, and your commission regarding the coastal zone, the format that's laid out in the county code provides that your commission may, if you wish to, make a recommendation to the County Planning Commission on amendments to the Article II zoning ordinance that would have an effect within the Montecito community plan area. So essentially, you would be adopting the findings and recommending that the County Planning Commission adopt findings and recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt the amendments. It's a little convoluted, but seems to work.
That's almost as obscure as some of the actual language. Mr. Langel, before you go any further, just a question related to Article II. Because the, I'm trying to get a sense of the relationship of what we're going to do related to Article II as it relates to the coastal commissions in action. Is this to correct some of the things that were corrected and was submitted but not approved by the coastal commission, or is this separate from that?
Mr. Chair, members of the Montecito Commission, very good question. As you're aware, the County Board of Supervisors did decide not to accept the modifications as approved by the coastal commission to both the county and the Montecito Land Use and Development Codes. That means that we are proceeding to continue to have Article II as the zoning ordinance in effect for the coastal zone. The proposed package, or the proposed amendment to Article II will not, will not really implement the modifications that the coastal commission approved. However, in certain areas, it does, the way I, it does utilize language that for those, for the areas of the modifications that were not controversial, that the staff of coastal commission and I worked out and were in agreement on, the coastal commission certified. And that will come up, and I'll try and identify those areas just so that it's clear, but primarily in a lot of the processing requirements for suspension conformity determinations and amendments, the language I provided reflects the certified language, and so the coastal commission has already sort of pre-blessed that. However, this being an amendment to Article II will have to be transmitted to the coastal commission for certification, and that will occur once the board acts on it in June.
What are the, what are the risks that they won't certify this?
How much money you got?
Okay. You answered the question.
Well, perhaps just a little bit more information. When, when the development codes were being reviewed by the coastal commission, they saw this as a wholesale redrafting and resubmital of Article II implementation program to implement the county's coastal land use plan and the state's coastal act. And so if they went through it with a fine-tooth comb and tried to fix many things that have been festering for years in their minds, and gave a wholesale look, as you, if you will, and suggested all sorts of modifications beyond what we expected them to come back with. With this being much more targeted, their avenue for inserting their review into other areas of the Article II that aren't being touched are much more restricted. And so we feel that we stand a good chance of them only looking at those areas that we've been, that we've submitted as amendments and not try and go beyond those like they did the last time.
Thank you.
So, the first issue area we'd like to discuss is that in regards to animal keeping, specifically in regards to household pets, which are those types of animals you would normally keep within your house, dogs, cats, birds, certain reptiles and rodents. We discovered when we were reviewing the development codes and Article II later on that many of the zone districts that allow for residential uses don't provide for any types of animal keeping. And so we felt that it was appropriate to at least allow for household pets to be kept within these other zone districts that allow for residential uses. So, within the Montecito Land Use and Development Code, we would be proposing to allow the keeping of households' pets accessory to a residential use in the neighborhood commercial zone, the CN zone, as well as the recreation zone. Both of these zones allow for residences, and we felt it was appropriate to allow for those residents to have pets.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mr. Langel, is it the county's approach to ordinances that should explicit permission to do something not exist, you're prohibited? Or is it, or is this just in an abundance of caution to flesh out the ordinance? Is that clear? That was a convoluted statement. Do you get it?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, yes, I understand the question. The ordinance is set up as a permissive ordinance. In other words, if it's listed, you may do it. Actually, the development code provides explicit language that if a use is not listed, that is not allowed.
Really? Okay. That's a lot of things.
In regards to Article II, there's several more zone districts that we're proposing to add the allowance for keeping of household pets. Many of these don't apply within the Montecito planning area. Really only the visitor-serving commercial zone and the recreation zone within the Article II ordinance would have, would be applicable to the Montecito planning area. The other zone districts, like Student Residential, only applies throughout the other portions of the county. Student Residential is a zone district used primarily within the island area, and we all know that nobody keeps dogs out there. So, this would correct that problem. And as way of structuring this hearing, perhaps if you have questions, we should, you know, address them within each of the issue areas and not wait, just so we can clear up any confusion that might be festering.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Accessory to an existing residential use, is that planning language for now permitted, or is accessory a big cage in the backyard? Is accessory separate from the house, or do you envision these pets being in the house, or can they be in their own house? How does that work?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, accessory to an existing residential use more or less just means that there has to be residential use on the property.
First.
And this, first, and this animal keeping would be accessory to that residential use. As far as where the animals live, they could be, you know, in dog houses in the backyard, they could be kept in the house, they could have separate little animal enclosures for things like rabbits and things like that. But it's just, the term accessory just means that it's being used, or the animal keeping occurs in relation to an existing residential use.
So I can breed dogs, I can have 20 Dalmatians in the backyard? Or do they all have to have a name?
You could have 20 Dalmatians, but not 20 of any other breed.
Not 20 of other?
Your, household pets has limitations as to the number of animals and the, and the nature of the keeping of those household pets. So you could not be running a commercial breeding operation. You're limited to three dogs.
Where is that, Mr. Van Mullen?
That's within the standards for household pets, specifically within the definitions. So, in the, in the, in the big book of the LUDC, it sets out within the animal keeping section, all the different standards that apply to keeping the different types of animals.
So you're taking that section and applying it to zone areas, or areas that didn't specifically call out for that?
That's correct.
So there's more language, there's three pets?
Three dogs.
Three dogs.
Unlimited number of fowl, provided they don't cause a problem with the neighbors.
Isn't it just, only one rooster?
Limitation on roosters, depending on lot size. So there's, there's a whole-
Cats aplenty, I would guess.
Cats are difficult to regulate, yes.
The rescue birds are on-
Excuse me, Commissioner Burrows?
I'm sorry, the rescue birds are on-
Hold on, the speaker.
Are we allowed to have rescue birds in Montecito?
They're-
Where they're temporarily kept until they're rescued and brought to us?
There's another, there's another section of the ordinance that provides for wildlife care facilities.
Okay.
If that's what you're thinking of.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
I got it. And I'm, I'm sorry, in the interest of perhaps brevity, I didn't include all the companion regulations to go along with these, with these amendments, just because it would make the staff report volumes thick and the ordinance itself quite large also. So, if you have questions, you know, please feel free to ask.
We have one more. Commissioner Ileson?
I get the impression that this is going to be an ongoing thing that'll probably never end, because as issues come up, more and more of these improvements, process improvements will go on, because permissiveness, as, as an issue arises that we don't have a permission for, and you want to create a permissive issue, you're going to have to modify something. Am I correct in assuming that?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, yes, you're correct, and a good example of that was something that Dr. Russell discussed, the application for, or the ordinance amendment to allow for commercial solar farms. You know, presently, our ordinance is not allowed for that type of a use. It's an emerging issue, and so we need to address that through an ordinance amendment. So yes, these, there will be a series of these ordinance amendments coming up over the years, as both we identify problems that we want to correct within the existing text as well as those emerging areas that need addressing within the, within the zoning ordinance.
I think we've faced that in other parts of our government, not necessarily county government, but like in schools, and so the state code on education, when I started, 60 years ago almost, in education, it just grew and grew, and it's still growing. The code probably grows more in a year than the whole size of it was 60 years ago. And I don't know where you find, you know, you have to reorganize the thing so you can find out whether you have permission to do a certain thing or not.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ileson, hopefully, our, yes, hopefully with the new development code, things are organized in a much more clear and cohesive manner, such that we have separate sections devoted to, you know, those uses allowed within a particular zone, and other sections identified, or that address specific types of uses. This is one of the reasons we embarked on rewriting the ordinances and adopting the development codes, was to make it a lot easier for both staff and the public to figure out what they could do on their property. But I understand your point, and I can only say that things tend to get more complex over time and not simpler, and I think we're seeing that with our own zoning codes, and we will continue to, to hopefully make things as simple as possible, but to the degree that we are, that we can. Some areas, we just can't do that.
Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chair, not to belabor this, but you just raised it for me. Wouldn't this be an opportunity to not identify how many fluffies can be in your house, or little dogs or big dogs? Who's enforcing this? How does that work? You have four dogs, one of them has to go. I mean, that couldn't, that's not going to happen, is it?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner-
How about one barking dog? Let's get rid of him.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, the three dog per household limit has been in the ordinance for some time. It also, it also corresponds to the threshold within the health code, in the county health code, as to at what point you cease being just a keeper of dogs into more of a kennel-type operation, and so within the health codes, the county requires that if you exceed three dogs, and you actually have to get a kennel permit from the public health department. We have a similar threshold in the development code, that if you want, if you want to keep more than three dogs, you may, but it's subject to the approval of a conditional use permit, so the conditions can be attached to the project that would help to ensure that the keeping of additional dogs would still be compatible with the, with the surrounding neighbors. Three is sort of seen as the threshold at this point in time. I agree, you know, one barking dog can certainly be a lot more intrusive than five small, very quiet dogs, and there are other avenues, again, through the public health department to address the barking dog issue.
Mr. Langel, I think complexity and enforcement are issues that we're going to have to deal with, but maybe we should move, move on to the next item here. We could spend all day talking about dogs here.
All right, if there are no further questions about animals, then let's move on to conditional use permit and development plan phasing procedures. What we're proposing would be to amend the ordinances, to provide a procedure to adopt phasing plans for projects that are allowed by conditional use permits and development plans. And these phasing plans would be used when normal permit extension, when normal permit expiration timelines and the extensions of those permits would not typically provide sufficient time in which to complete the project. These phasing plans would be adopted by the review authority at the time of project approval, and revisions to the phasing plan to extend those timelines could be achieved through either the existing suspension conformity determination amendment or revision process. The, what's proposed does provide, however, that if a deadline passes and a particular permit is not obtained, then the conditional use permit or the development plan is automatically revised to delete those unbuilt phases for which the permit deadline passed. You may recall recently in adopting, or in approving conditional use permits, let's say for Westmont, they contained, my review of the permit shows that it contained, within the permit conditions itself, sort of what the proposed phasing of their project was to be, knowing that it was going to be built out over several year periods. What we're doing is providing the, sort of the basis for approving those phasing plans within, within the development code itself, so that it's, it's there in black and white for everybody to utilize.
Mr. Langel, I'm a little confused. Since we already have phasing, what, what is this doing that we don't already have provisions for?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, we really don't, within the development code itself, or Article II, have provisions to adopt phasing plans as part of development projects, as part of conditional use permits or development plans. We've been addressing it specifically for certain large projects just within the conditions of approval, but those conditions do not necessarily reflect actual ordinance language that allows for that to occur.
Got it. Thank you. I have a couple of other questions related to this, if it's appropriate to ask. It indicates at the bottom of the staff report on page four, it uses the language, time allowed by the development code, to fully develop the project prior to permit expiration would be insufficient. The two words that I'm, that are bothering me a little bit is fully and insufficient. So, maybe you could elaborate a little bit on what, what the definition of those two terms would mean in a real-life example. terms would mean in a, a real life example.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll use the example, let's say, of, of a church who applies for a conditional use permit to build the church, build a fellowship hall, for example, build certain classrooms or, or educational facilities part of the church. So what, my, my use of the term fully is, is to, is to build the whole of the project that's approved through the conditional use permit. Now, within the ordinance, it says you have a certain timeframe in which you have to build the project, and if you don't build it, then the CUP is declared void. So, and the ordinance also provides for certain extensions of time that may be allowed. So typically, when a CUP is approved, the, the standard time in which to pull, or to obtain your land use permit, or zoning clearance actually nowadays, in which to commence construction, is 18 months. And in many cases, there's a whole lot of conditions of approval that have to be satisfied before you can get that zoning clearance in order to begin construction. Some of those conditions may be those that address just the initial phase, let's say the building of the church sanctuary itself. Some of them may be in regards to subsequent buildings that are being, that are being proposed, such as the fellowship hall or, or classroom facilities. And right now, the, the timelines involved in, in both the initial, you know, let's say 18 months in which to pull your permits, plus the allowance for a, a year time extension, especially for nonprofit facilities that rely on fundraising, to raise the funds to build projects, they may not be able to raise the money and to, and to fulfill the conditions and commence construction within those, within those time periods. So by providing the phasing plan, it would allow for the, for the, you know, the, it would specify the times which, let's say, the church needs to be built, in which the fellowship hall would be built, in which the classroom facilities would be built. So fully developed, just to me, just, it means to develop the whole of the project.
Okay. And, Mr. Ileson?
Okay. The question I have is, let's suppose this, this gets approved, goes through the various phases, supervisors, when would it, and it has to go Coastal Commission, when, at what time would it become available for the public to have access, convenient access, on the computer, on the website, to where it would become usable? And is there, do you have funding to carry this project all the way through to its implementation?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ileson, the amendment to the Montecito Development Code will go into effect 30 days after action by the Board of Supervisors. The amendment to the Article Two's coastal zoning ordinance will go into effect once it's certified by the Coastal Commission. That is a minimum of a 14-month process at this point in time. We strive to get the, the online versions and, and, and hard copy versions of the development codes updated prior to them going into effect. However, it's been a little bit constrained to do that recently, since basically we have one staff person who's assigned to that, who's sitting before you today, and with everything going on, especially with the development codes and the Coastal Commission, we've fallen behind. But the simple answer to your question is, for the inland portion of Montecito, they would be on the computer prior to them going into effect, which would be 30 days from the Board's approval of the amendment.
And it would be in some format that would be fairly comfortable for the user to pull it up and, and determine the facts without coming down to the office and meeting staff, do you think?
Well, it, it would be in the format that's included in, as the attachment C for the Montecito code to your staff report, without the strike through and underline. So it would just be part of the development code that's, that's online. Certain people are certainly more savvy in reading develop, in reading zoning ordinances, and may understand it as, as it is, but in this particular instance, I think projects of this, of this nature are those that typically require a lot of pre-planning, and so I think if somebody was to build a project of such a scope that was going to necessitate some sort of a phasing plan approved with it, they'd be meeting with a planner well before application.
Certainly.
And so that could all be discussed at that time.
I just, I'm interested in, in, in user-friendly, so that people can do a lot of research in their office and not have to take up staff time, determining whether they're, what they're thinking is, is out of line or not. Can they get into that site and, and see it? I, I go in once in a while, but I, I admit, I have to, I have to do more of it in order to get more familiar with how to ferret out things.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ileson, there are certainly, some jurisdictions have very comprehensive websites, and besides not only having the development codes or their zoning ordinances online, they have a lot of how-to applications as well, like, you know, how to process a lot line adjustment, or what is a lot validity determination, things like that. If you go onto the city of Portland, for example, very extensive website, a lot of self-help information on that. We're not that extensive in ours local. We are constrained, certainly by, by staff resources at this time to build that up. But over time, we are trying to make it a more comprehensive, easy-to-use website, and we make progress every year.
Mr. Lengel, I have one further question. On the staff report on page five, under item four, I, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm not missing a distinction here. The four A indicates that, well, the whole thing is predicated on if, if the time lift and the application hasn't, for a revised phasing plan has not been, not been submitted, then the conditional use permit or the development plan is considered void. That's A. And then B, it says the conditional use permit or the development permit is automatically revised to eliminate the phases that haven't been completed. In, in effect, aren't those, isn't A also included by intent in, in, under B? I mean, if it hasn't been done, it's eliminated? Or am I, am I missing some subtlety here that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, essentially what it's trying to say, that if a certain deadline passes and a particular phase has not been commenced, and the extension has not been submitted to extend that time period, then A says that the conditional use permit is no longer, is null and void as to allowing for that phase. And then B just says that the, the permit is automatically revised to eliminate that phase from the permit itself. So it's-
Keeping the permit viable.
Yes. So it's, it's just, B is more or less just sort of a house cleaning that says, okay, under A, you didn't build this in time, you didn't get a time extension, that phase of the project is, is null and void, and B just says, and then we're cleaning up the permit to eliminate that phase from the permit itself.
Okay, I gotta trust you. I'm not, I'm not following very well. Okay, move, move along, you don't, we don't need to hang it up for my inability to read here.
B is more or less just housekeeping.
Okay.
A says, you've lost the rights to build that phase. B says, we're revising your permit to just, the permit, the CUP itself, to eliminate it from, from the CUP.
Okay.
This one's easier. Since it would not have any effect within the Montecito community plan area. This, this addresses demolition and reclamation permits that are applicable, or applied to existing oil and gas facilities that have run their usable lifetime and now need to be removed. So since there are none of these within Montecito, this wouldn't have any effect. This is amending Article Two only, and would basically just require that, in order to approve this type of a permit, that since it's in the coastal zone, and since it's considered development, that a coastal development permit or CDP be processed concurrently with the demolition and reclamation permit. It also provides that revisions to that permit may be achieved through the existing substantial conformity amendment or revision process.
Commissioner, um, excuse me. Mr. Lengel, we have no jurisdiction out into the channel at all. There could be oil and gas raising their head out there, I would think.
The state of California has jurisdiction out to the three mile limit. Your jurisdiction ends at the, the mean high tide line.
It does.
Yes.
Okay.
Moving right along to indemnification, then this would amend both the Montecito Land Use Development Code and Article Two. This amendment would provide a regulatory basis for the county to require an owner or applicant to indemnify the county when a project approval is challenged in court. Currently, we do require this as, through the standard conditions of approval of a project, that the owner or applicant agree to indemnify the county, essentially that if the county is sued based on an approval of a project, that the owner will pick up the cost of, of litigating that, that lawsuit. And the ordinance amendment would require, then, that a defense and indemnification agreement be submitted with each and every application for development, and by the owner and/or applicant of, of that project. And the reason I have it underlined on the screen, the last owner and/or, and/or applicant, is just to remind myself, to let you know, that in the current text, it just says owner slash applicant, and based on some conversations with the county council, we wanted to revise that, just to say owner and/or applicant.
Excuse me, is this municipal law, county law, all throughout the US, or is this peculiar to Santa Barbara?
There are many jurisdictions that require this type of an agreement be, be entered into.
So we ask a landowner to get a permit, and then if a third party challenges that permit process, the landowner has to defend the county in any litigation, even though the county required the permit in the first instance.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, yes, the county is the one requiring the permit to, let's say, construct a residence on a piece of property. It's the owner, or that has the entitlement permit, however, that's getting, getting the benefit, if you will, of having that permit, and so the county seeks to have the person achieving or getting the benefit be the one that defends the, and any lawsuit that may arise from the county's approving that permit.
Mr. Lengel, I, I accept that this is fine, but I'm, I'm curious, because I, this, I don't understand something. If, what happens if the county made a mistake? In the, in the processing of a permit, they, they missed something and it ends up in a lawsuit? You're still requiring the owner to defend the county, even though the county made an error. Is that, is that correct?
I'm looking at county council. I mean, I'm, I'm sure the agreement that we will have to come up with before this goes into effect could be structured to provide that if the, if it's shown that the cow, that due to errors or omissions by the county is the basis for the lawsuit, that we could address that as, as part of the agreement, as part of the agreement.
That's fine, but my, my interpretation is not incorrect. Is that, would you say that that's right?
Uh, Mr. Chair, no, you're right. If the county were to approve a permit for a house, and let's say there was some grievous error, that the, the house straddled the property line, for example, and the county either didn't understand that or approved it even with that knowledge, and the, and the neighbor whose property the house partially encroached upon sued, sued the county and said, hey, you've approved, approved a permit in error because it slops onto my property. Yes, this would say that the owners, the person who's building the house is responsible for defending the lawsuit, but in a situation like that, I'm sure that we could work something out with, with that owner.
Unless the, unless the form of the indemnification agreement excluded that, but just on the face of it, that's what it would say.
Yes, on, on its face, you're correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Lengel, just quickly, if you're providing a legitimate government function, there's a degree of immunity. That's the first defense level. Council, is that correct? You, you don't, you're not dragged in the court when you're performing a legitimate government function and saying, okay, we're here to defend. You're, you're objecting to you being there in the first instance, aren't you?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, basically, the indemnification would work as to any challenge, whether or not that challenge is ultimately proven to be of merit. It just is in the challenge to set aside or attack or nullify the approval.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, okay. I'm not sure how you guys are involved in this, but I guess everyone gets drawn and dragged into all these things. Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, yes, the government does have certain immunities. However, a lawsuit can always be filed, and then, you know, there's a lot of litigation costs involved in defending that, that lawsuit. For example, the Adam Brothers case versus the county, took several years, costs a lot of money. The initial jury decision was to award the applicant, the applicant in that case several million dollars based on a regulatory takings that they felt had occurred. Ultimately, that decision was reversed by the appeals court, but, you know, yes, we have certain immunities, provided we're acting within the scope of our job. However, somebody can always file a suit, and there's costs involved in defending that Regarding land use permits, again, amending both the Montecito Land Use Development Code and Article Two, the proposal is to add a one-year requirement in which, or to the approved land use permit, in which the land use permit must be issued, and also have the possibility of one, one-year time extension for good cause by the director. Currently, a land use permit is sort of a two-phase approval process. If the permit is initially approved, usually with conditions, and then once those conditions are fulfilled, the permit is, is issued. Right now, there is no timeline between, or there's no, there's no timeline in which a, an approved land use permit can last, it can essentially, before you have to have it issued, essentially it can be years. So the problem is that if you have something approved in, let's say, 2010, and you don't actually get it issued until 2015, during that five-year integrating period, the environmental setting could have changed substantially, rules and regulations could have changed substantially, such that that approval may not, may no longer be appropriate, but there's no way under the existing ordinance to prevent that from happening. So what we're proposing is to add the one-year timeline with the possibility of a one-year time extension to land use permits. And once you have the land use permit approved and then issued, then you, the issuance lasts for two years, and you have another one-year extension on top of that. So essentially, what's being proposed is that from the date of approval, you would have five years to commence construction of the project. So initial one-year period for land use permit, a one-year time extension for, on that approval, once it's issued, two years, and then a one-year time extension on that. approval, once it's issued, two years, and then a one-year time extension on that issuance. And this would conform the LUP to the existing timelines for coastal development permits.
And, go ahead, Mr. Idelson.
Okay, then, when we're finished with the five years, we go back to the baseline and start again, is that it on the project or not?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, that's essentially correct, that if you let the five year lapse and you haven't commenced the project, then you more or less start over.
Because there could be new ordinances in place at that time that would apply.
There could be new ordinances in place, there could be new neighbors that might have a different take on the project, you know, over that time period, you know, things...
Everything's open on the table then?
Yes, it's a brand-new permit at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lengel, the current situation, we're granting, I believe it's a two-year extension beyond this for financial hardship. That was a temporary decision, I don't know how temporary temporary is, am I correct on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, you know, in addition to what we're proposing, the other extensions within the ordinance could also be brought to bear, and certainly, the two-year time extension for, that's for hardship that's in the ordinance, could also be applied for a land use permit, so under that, you could extend it to seven years. Now, that particular amendment sunsets December of 2012, so...
Okay. That actually does raise a question in my mind, one of definition. Is there anywhere in the existing ordinances, either for the coastal or elsewhere, that gives definition and meaning to the term "good cause," or is that simply subjective at the time that it's requested?
Mr. Chair, there's no existing definition. It's sort of left to the discretion of, in this case, the director as to if the applicant has showed that there are good reasons, good valid reasons, why the permit needs to be extended.
Okay. Commissioner Idelson?
I think that one concerns me too, a great deal. I assume it concerns the chair, but it's such an important point, we've moved up to five years, and then, the next two years can be counter-approved by the director without a set of specific guidelines set out that have to be met.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that's, yes, that's true, there's no checklist as to what represents good cause, you know, there's nothing that says, well, your bank account has to have diminished by a certain amount or anything like that. And we purposely left it open so that a whole different, a whole range of situations could be addressed. But in order to approve the time extension, the director still has to find that the original findings for approval are still appropriate. So, there is at least that check in the process.
Commissioner Phillips?
And the EIR has to sustain review as well. It can't be stale, it has, it can be challenged as to its validity, and may well be at five, six, seven years out. That's true. This still has to be certified, so the EIR, if stale, is attackable, perhaps.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, typically, what we're addressing here wouldn't involve an environmental impact report.
It would be too late for that, yeah.
But essentially, the findings on which a larger-scale project that involved in the EIR rely heavily upon the mitigation measures that arise out of the EIR, so the decision-maker, the director, would have to look back and at least ascertain that those still are appropriate to the project.
Thank you.
Modification processes and waived hearing amendment to Montecito Land Use Development Code and Article Two. The modification process is a staff-level process. It's used to allow for minor revisions to the normal zone district standards for ministerial projects, for example, to allow for minor increases in the height or decreases in the setbacks for a particular piece of, for a particular property. For larger discretionary projects such as conditional use permits and development plans, the modification is built into the review of that, of that permit itself, and that is approved by the review authority, usually the planning commission. But for ministerial permits like a land use permit, for example, if you want to build your house slightly into what normal required setback would be, then you would go through the modification process in order to allow that to occur. Currently, that is a, that requires a public hearing, and within Montecito, that would be in front of your commission. The proposal includes to provide for a waived hearing process similar to what already exists for coastal development permits and certain other development, such that if the director determines that the project is minor enough and not likely to cause any controversy, then we will notice the neighbors that would normally be noticed of any public hearing that this development has been proposed. It's our feeling that it's a minor, it's minor nature, and that we're going to waive the hearing unless one of the people receiving notice requests that hearing, that a hearing be held, and then we will step back and prepare and schedule and prepare a staff report and hold a public hearing. But what we've found over the years with these modifications is that typically, there is not a lot of controversy generated, associated with them. Typically, neighbors are on good terms with each other, and it's not causing a concern to the neighbor perhaps closest to where the setback reduction would occur. And we haven't had a lot of public testifying at these hearings, and so, we figured this was a situation that was ripe for providing at least the waived hearing process. The ordinance also proposes to clarify an existing standard or existing procedure within the ordinance that says that you can apply for a reduction of a particular setback area of up to 20% of that particular area, of that setback. It's silent as to, it's really looking at, you know, what the application is, like you want to extend a bathroom out into your side yard of so many square feet, and it didn't specifically address what the, how you would calculate out what that reduction would be if there is already non-conforming structures located within that setback area. This has provided some confusion to staff and applicants over the years, and so, we're just putting it in the ordinance to provide in black and white that if you already have a non-conforming structure that's sitting within your setback area, then the footprint of that structure is also included in determining whether or not what you're proposing to further encroach into your setback meets the limit of a 20% reduction.
Mr. Lengel, two questions related to that. The last one related to the 20%, you used the word "non-conforming," and I just want to make sure I'm clear. Any structure that encroaches into a setback is by definition non-conforming, is that right?
Non-conforming implies that the structure was either built when there were no setback requirements, or was built at a time when the setback requirements were different and then have been changed, such that it now encroaches into that setback area. So, it implies a certain sort of, people usually, you know, use the term "legal non-conforming" to imply that it's there legally, it just doesn't conform to today's regulations.
So, if a building, an owner has gone through this, this is the second time they're going through a process, the first time they went through, they encroached into the setback and got approval for it. Is that encroachment into the setback viewed as non-conforming or not, since it was approved? We haven't changed the setback requirement, but we've previously approved encroachment into it.
Mr. Chair, that would be considered conforming because it went through the required process to allow it to be there.
Okay, so, the 20% would apply to both non-conforming and conforming?
When determining, yes, I mean, essentially, when determining if the request is lower than the 20% threshold, we would look at what that setback is, what it's required to be, and then do the math, so to speak. So, we would look at both previous legal incursions and non-conforming incursions.
Okay. Then, the other question that I had relates to the waived hearing part of it. I don't remember the specifics on it, but I know that when you went through previously with the Coastal Commission, they had, on several different issues, they had some difficulty with the concept of a waived hearing. Are we creating a problem here?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe so, because this, again, mirrors what the Coastal Commission process is for coastal development permits, that when the local jurisdiction determines that the, that the nature of development is minor enough, and that it conforms with the local coastal program, that the waived hearing process is appropriate.
Okay. Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Lengel, could you, what ministerial projects require an MPC hearing? It's my understanding that they necessarily did not require a hearing.
Well, currently, for example, a coastal development permit to build what would otherwise be a ministerial project, you know, not subject to a public hearing, and let's say, the appeals jurisdiction of the coastal zone requires a public hearing unless waived, but if there is a public hearing, then the jurisdiction over that shifts to outside of Montecito, to the zoning administrator, and within Montecito, to the Montecito Planning Commission. So, coastal development permits with hearing are example of what would nominally be a ministerial permit that is heard by the Montecito Planning Commission. Currently, modifications are always heard by the Montecito Planning Commission for ministerial permits.
Because we're zoning, not...
The height issue, I think the setback issue is terrific. I think it's so localized and so impacts that immediate plot, but height is, height reaches further and impacts greater. Would there be a height variation on a home that is ministerial that would have been a public hearing and now isn't? You say height and setback for ministerial projects that had required a hearing and now won't. I don't know, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, under a modification, you can only apply to increase the permitted height of a structure by three feet. So, let's say your height limit is 25 feet, because you're coastal Montecito, this would allow you, under the modification process, you could go up to 28 feet. So, this would typically only impact the most adjacent, or the adjacent residences, and everybody within the 300-feet radius of the project site would receive notification of the proposal to waive the hearing and could request that a hearing be held, and then we would hold one.
We were, we were looking at the Crane School project last month, and there was a request for a variation on height on their all-purpose gym or whatever that would be. So, you get a, you would get a three-foot wave unless objected to, that wouldn't be subject to our review.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, in that particular instance, if you're trying to modify the height limit through, I believe that was probably a conditional use permit or development plan, there is no, there is no limit as to what you can apply for within the CUP or development plan process under a modification to the height standard. Within the modification...
First has to be ministerial.
Yes, so, it would have to apply, the permit would otherwise have to be ministerial in nature, and you could only request up to a three-foot increase in the height.
And historically, some of these would be public hearings here, and now they won't be.
Historically, they've all been public hearings.
All been public hearings.
Right, because that's what the current ordinance requires, is a public hearing in all instances.
On ministerial permits.
On what would otherwise be ministerial permit, because you're requesting a modification of the height, yes.
Mr. Lengel, could, could an item that was noticed, but for which there was no public objection, could it be placed on a consent agenda? Let me tell you what my concern is, and actually, I thought Commissioner Phillips was going to go here. When we were hearing the school project last month, there was a well-respected lady in the neighborhood who I know personally, who indicated very clearly that she had not received notification. And that's not the first time we've ever heard that. I'm sure there are people who get them and don't pay attention to them, but I think there's also the possibility that somebody didn't get them. And I share Commissioner Phillips' concern. I think when we get into the height issue, I would want to make sure that the neighbor, neighbors who are directly, potentially directly affected by that, had in fact received the notice. And maybe there, maybe there's a way to split this, split this and have it come to us on a consent agenda, so we don't take a lot of time with it. Your thoughts?
Well, Mr. Chair and members of the Montecito Commission, one of the benefits of going through the waived hearing process is that you don't have to wait for an available agenda, which I understand at this point in time is not an issue. Typically, with a consent agenda, there is at least some minimal staff report that has to be prepared in case your commission decides to take it off the consent agenda, and here it is a regular item. So, there's additional costs involved in preparing that staff report, which would not be required if the waived hearing occurred or happened. And thirdly, the level of noticing for an item that appears on your agenda would be the same as what we will be doing when we're advising a neighbor that, or proposing to waive the hearing on this particular application. And so, there's really no guarantee that they would get the notice in one instance, but not in the other instance, you know, if they were, you know, out of the country or whatever, they wouldn't get the notice in either, in either case.
Okay. Let's continue on.
Moving on, this is probably one of the more complex issues as part of this package, and this would be in regards to motor vehicle and material storage amendment to both the Montecito Land Use Development Code and Article Two.
Mr. Lengel, let me interrupt you just for a second, I want to take the temperature of the commission. Anybody need a break? Because my intent would be, when Mr. Lengel finishes his presentation, unless county council tells me, I can't do it, all the speaker slips that I have relate to this item. So, my intent would be to take public comment on this item only, which means we're going to have Mr. Lengel's presentation, our questions, public comment. So, anybody need a break, or we want to keep going?
Mr. Chair, you certainly could take public comment on any of the issue areas as they come up, and then at the end, ask if there's anybody else, you know, just had some general comments.
Okay. Apparently, we're going to continue.
If you want to plow through, that's fine. Okay, so, what the proposal is, is that within residential zones, the amendment would regulate the storage of construction materials and equipment. and equipment, would regulate vehicle repair and dismantling, would regulate the parking and storage of vehicles on property, and would regulate the stockpiling of materials, scrap, and junk. Currently, within the development code, in the Article II zoning ordinance, there's very little in the way that addresses these types of uses of property. There are other sections of the county code that address, let's say, abandoned vehicles and using, and junkyards, but they really don't get to some of the issues that have arisen that we're trying to address with this ordinance amendment. And primarily, that's in regards to people that desire to collect cars on their property for one reason or another, and people that also stockpile materials on their property that they've salvaged from other properties, or just accumulate over time. I know that we probably all have some stuff that we don't know why we keep it, but we keep it. And this would, this would seek to impose regulations that would ensure that those types of uses of property would be compatible with the neighborhood. So, in regards to the first area, of storage of building materials and equipment, this is aimed at the situation where there's construction going on, on either a piece of property, let's say, somebody's building a house, and that construction involves using an adjacent piece of property to store building materials and/or, let's say, construction equipment. You know, because of, you know, it could be that the, the building site itself is constrained, and you don't really have the room in order to do this. So, this would allow that adjacent site could be used for the storage of materials and construction equipment, provided that there's a valid building permit in effect for the construction, and that the planning permit for the construction project identifies that, you know, there will be an adjacent lot used for storage, and the nature of what that storage is going to be, whether it be building materials or equipment, and where, and where it will be stored. The second part of this particular amendment addresses vehicle repair and dismantling, and it's proposed that vehicle repair be limited to repair of personal vehicles of the resident of the property that the repair is occurring on, that the resident may be an owner or a tenant of that particular piece of property, but in the case of a tenant, that the lease or rental of the property has to be for a minimum of 30-day period, so that you don't have a situation occurring that I'll get into later with wedding facilities, for example, where you rent the whole of a vacant piece of property, let's say, for two weeks to a person, and they can use it to rebuild their, their engine on their, in their, on their car. And this also addresses that any wrecked or abandoned vehicle dismantling is not allowed to occur outside, but must occur within a completely enclosed structure In regards to parking of vehicles, and this would be aimed at the storage of vehicles on property, that would limit the number of vehicles that can be stored to five, in addition to what the zoning district would require for parking on that property, that the storage area be limited to a cumulative area of 700 square feet, that the area in which the vehicle storage occurs must be an improved surface, that the vehicles may not be visible from public roads, public use areas such as parks or trails, and adjacent lots, and that the storage may not be located within the required front or side setback areas. And I should mention that this would not apply to the temporary parking of guests that may come to your property, if it's for less than, for less than five consecutive Vehicles that are stored on property must have a current registration under our proposal with the Department of Motor Vehicles. This would include both operation, operational and nonoperational vehicles. And if they're not registered for street operation, in other words, they're not able to be driven on the street under their current registration, then they have to be drained of gasoline, oil, and other flammable liquids if they're kept there for more than 14 days. The ordinance also provides that these standards may be modified with a conditional use permit. So, if you desire to store automobiles in a manner that does not confly with these regulations, you could apply to the county to do so, and that could be approved, but subject to approval of a conditional use permit, that could then have certain conditions attached to that permit that would ensure that that storage is compatible with the neighborhood. And the last area is, addresses stockpiled materials, scrap, and junk, so that the area that could be devoted to this would be limited to a certain square footage based on your lot size, 300 square feet if the lot is less than 10,000 square feet, 500 square feet if the lot is 10,000 square feet to less than one acre. And one acre or larger, it could be up to 1,000 square feet in area. The height of the stockpiled materials, et cetera, is limited to five feet. It has to be enclosed by a six-foot-high solid fence, and the ordinance provides that the director may modify this requirement, both to not require the fencing if the area cannot be seen from outside the property anyway due to topography, vegetation, whatever. But it also allows the director to increase the height of the screening if the, if the six-foot fence would be insufficient to provide the screening characteristics. You would not be allowed to stockpile the materials within the front or side setback areas. And again, similar to the storage of vehicles, that these regulations could be modified through the conditional use permit process. The ordinance does provide that there's a six-month grace period from the effective date of the ordinance, in other words, from, for at least the inland area, 30 days after the board adopts the ordinance, if they so choose so, that you would have six months from that effective date in which to bring your property into compliance if it doesn't currently comply, and that if your property does not comply for six months, that then it would be subject to zoning enforcement and penalties. So, essentially, in this case, it provides that properties, that existing situations will not be nonconforming, that you have to then make them conform after the six-month period, and if you don't, then the zoning enforcement can proceed to make them conform.
Mr. Idelson?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, could you go a little more into enforcement? Because if we can put in a lot of ordinances, but can we enforce? And I'm especially interested in, in these two, I think they're very interesting and they're very, very appropriate, the abandonment of cars, or some people park a car that isn't operating, and it's in an obvious violation of the ordinance supplies, materials. How, how would one go about seeing compliance? How would you seek that out as a, as a neighbor, as a person in public?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Idelson, this is actually one of the amendments that has been, that our enforcement team has sought to have added into the ordinance to give them more, more teeth, if you will, more ability to actually regulate this type of activity, because currently, the Development Code is, does not really address this head-on. Essentially, our enforcement program is based on neighborhood complaints. So, if neighbors complained about, you know, vehicles piling up on property, or junk, whatever, and they filed a zoning enforcement, or filed a zoning violation with the county of Santa Barbara, then we would send an enforcement officer out to investigate the situation, determine if there was a violation, and then proceed from, proceed from that point on.
Would there be a way that they could do this off the Internet, or would this require coming in and paying a fee and filling a form out, or would there be a fee related to it?
There is no fee related to filing a zoning violation. I don't know that we have, I know some jurisdictions you can do it, just through your computer. I don't know that we have that capability. We do require, we don't take anonymous complaints, because that leads to, let's just say, to mischief on parts of people. That if you're going to file a zoning enforcement complaint, we want to know that you're serious about it, and that we will be able to contact you if we need further information from you regarding the ongoing nature of the complaint.
I think most people will fail to file them just because they don't want to have hard feelings in a neighborhood and that sort of thing.
Evidently, we can, we do accept them online, but again, we require that you give us your name and contact information.
Mr. Lengel, what Commissioner is really asking is whether this applies to older Corvettes. That's his concern.
And Porsches. Are there any more questions for Mr. Lengel at this point? Then, I think I will open this right now, this item, for public comment. And I have three speaker slips. I ask that you all keep your comments reasonably brief. First is Randy Regitz, followed by Ray Smith, and Ralph Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Randy Reitz. I live in Mission Canyon. Mission Canyon has a history of some problem properties with extensive storage of what I would call inoperable vehicles. The particular property I have in mind has a history that goes back for 27 years. In that time, everybody from Commissioner, or Supervisor Carvajal, Waste Management, Land Use Planning, Zoning Enforcement, the South County BAR, Environmental Health, and the Fire Department have all addressed this property, and its use today is exactly the same as it was 27 years ago. There's been as many as 50 cars stored on this property, and the problem hasn't been solved. Mr. Lengel's ordinance has already been discussed at various levels in Mission Canyon, where I live. The Mission Canyon Association has endorsed it, and I think we owe a debt of gratitude to Mr. Lengel for doing such a good job. I think it's a good ordinance. It's strict. It says five cars, but it's flexible, because it allows a minor conditional use permit for exceptional circumstances. So, I appreciate the commission's endorsement of the ordinance, proposed ordinance, and its recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ralph Daniel. We switched places. I'll be very quick. This is one photo that was taken from a reebah way in Mission Canyon. And at la, I was, about a week ago, I did a count. I think there were 23 junk vehicles and three or four large vehicle-sized junk generators on this property on Palomino Road in Mission Canyon. And if you could go to the other slide, which is an aerial from, that I worked on yesterday. This is a Google aerial. The image was taken, the Google image was taken in August of 2010. So, some of the houses that will, there are some lots that, where the houses burnt in the heat of fire and have not yet recovered, but the red zone are, covers all of the homes and part of the neighborhood that view this particular property on Palomino. The purple encompasses the homes that have to go drive by this piece of property every day to and from their homes. I did not do a count. I don't know, Michael, do you have a count about how many houses have a view? Do you know? I would guess it's probably thirty, forty houses, easily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burrows? Where is the storage area, any question, on this map?
Oh, um-
Where?
Right there. You got it. It says Mira. It's, yeah, right here. And- This is basically, this is a hollow. This is, this is, if you follow Alamar, Alamar then becomes a dirt road. It becomes a, what I call Alamar Canyon. It come, and then the end of the canyon wraps up, basically becomes a hollow here. And so, this, this, these are all hills looking down into Mr. Mira's property, where all these junk cars and the photo you saw.
Chair, overall, and members of the commission, my name is Raymond Smith. I'm the president of the Mission Canyon Association, and we want to thank Noah Lengel for bringing this ordinance to you. I've been on the board of the Mission Canyon Association now for about two decades, and this issue has existed from the very first day that I walked in. Save for issues of parking and circulation in the canyon, we receive more complaints about this particular issue, and this isn't the only property, so we're not picking on just one individual. But this is one of the issues that we receive more complaints about than anything else. I had one comment about the, the ordinance. The ordinance talks about things that can be viewed from an adjoining lot. As Ralph Daniel shows here, this can be viewed from many neighborhood lots, and so, it isn't just the abutting lots that are offended by this issue, but those that can view it. Our board has completely voted unanimously to endorse this, and the Mission Canyon Association would very much appreciate your recommending this to move forward to other planning commissions and the Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you. You took the words out of my mouth. We are in a position of approving this for the Montecito Land Use Code, but not the county.
Yes.
So, I think you've brought some issues to our attention of how abuse can hap, is happening and how it can happen. But I strongly urge you to go before the County Planning Commission.
Oh, yes, we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just quickly, Mr. Lengel, can you go beyond adjoining? Can, can the speaker's objective be accomplished? The view issue?
Yes. Let me look at the specific language.
While you're doing that, I have an additional speaker slip from Victoria Green, representing the Montecito Association, and we also have a comment letter from them. So, you can prepare yourself to talk to us.
road or other area of public use, e.g., parked trail or any adjoining lot.
Please read it again.
The area, the area in which the cars are stored. The area shall be located so that vehicles kept, parked, or stored thereon are not visible from any public-
from any public road or other area of public use, e.g., park, trail, or any adjoining lot. So it does restrict it to views from adjoining lots. The gentleman has made the point that it's not just the adjoining lots that are impacted. It's essentially, because the topography of the area, there's a number of residences that are not directly adjacent, however, do look down into this particular piece of property and see the, and see that the car is stored there. I think the situation would be a lot less if there were only five cars. Definitely, it would not be as egregious as what the picture shows on the screen. But your Commission is welcome to expand that if you would like to do so.
So it could read "visible," period?
It could read "visible," period. That's correct, Commissioner Phillips. At some point in time, you have to look at what is the distance involved. If something is visible at 1,000 feet, is it really that impactful as if it were visible right next door?
Indeed. But these folks have been looking at this for 27 years, or issues like this. And here's an opportunity to make it work for the whole community. So if you would focus on that, that would be a good idea.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. Following up on that, if this ordinance were adopted, these ordinances were adopted, how would that affect this particular situation?
Essentially, the property owner would have six months from the effective date of the ordinance to bring the property into compliance.
So, but then, but then what actions do this particular neighborhood, or any neighborhood, have available to them after the six months? Which then, I think, goes to Mr. Idelson's question earlier on, like, what is, what is available as far as enforcement after the six months? What's going to happen then? This is 27 years. So what happens after six months? What recourse does this particular neighborhood, or any neighborhood, have, you know, does the court go to court for them and say, okay, fine? You know, we're going to fix it? Who's going to fix it?
Well, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Gostaner, and members of the Montecito Planning Commission, the reason this has gone on for this period of time is that the ordinance has not had the necessary regulations to address it. So existing zoning enforcement activities have been ineffective to try and clean it up. This will provide the process and the regulations necessary for if, after six months, happens, and the property is not brought into compliance, then the zoning enforcement will go out. They'll do an inspection. They'll determine that a violation exists. They will develop an abatement schedule with the owner, by which point in time they have to clean up the property, so to speak. If the owner does not adhere to that abatement schedule, then they are subject to fines.
Okay. Mr. Idelson, and then Ms. Green.
We had a piece of property about, I think it was around 12 years ago on East Valley, that had a lot of vehicles on it, and also a lot of just accumulation of junk and equipment. And that piece of property, what finally happened with the neighbors' complaints is that the Fire Department took it upon themselves to find it as being a hazard and a problem. And the removal was supervised by that agency. Is there a possibility in this particular case, or some of these cases, the joint working with the county with another agency like the Fire Department to accomplish these objectives? Get them cleared?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Idelson, we always work with the, with the other departments if they can address the situation. In this particular situation, the county public works, Solid Waste Division, has been out several times to try and deal with it. I don't know that we've involved the county Fire Department on this particular one. But there, some situations can be addressed through fire abatement as part of a public nuisance process. Other situations can't, depending on what is the nature of the stored junk, or abandoned automobiles, things like that.
Yeah. Well, I think in this case, you certainly got vehicles, probably have oil, probably have gasoline, you have toxic materials, batteries, and whatever. You have Vector Control District, too, that has some issues. But like most of the Fire Departments, they're, I think they're certified under safety, not just fire, but it's health and safety rules, too, would apply to some of this stuff. But it's a shame that it can't get taken care of, you know, some way or another. But maybe this will help. Okay.
Continue with public comment.
Mr. Chair, do you want all of our comments now, or just on this specific topic?
You know what? You've got the floor. Why don't you cover them all?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. I'm Victoria Green. I'm representing the Montecito Association. Our Land Use Committee and our Board of Directors had the opportunity to look at the Ordinance Amendment Package. And, you know, generally, we strongly endorse the changes that are being proposed. You know, they provide for cleanups to the ordinance that have been a while in coming. It codifies some things like the indemnity clause, the provisions for phasing and conditional use permits and development plans that we think are good additions and ought to be there. We also are supportive of the provisions you were just talking about with respect to vehicle storage, junk storage, construction material storage, and we're supportive of those. We did have a couple of suggestions, just really, generally minor things. You know, we didn't understand why the standards for the motor vehicle parking and storage, as well as for stockpiled materials, didn't prohibit those things from being stored in rear yard setbacks, but only in the front and the side yard. Seems like there are potential effects on neighbors at the back of properties as well. So we'd ask that that be added in. And also, with respect to storage of various objects, there was the thought that there ought to be some requirement in the standards for control of drainage from those areas, particularly where vehicles were stored. And then another topic, which we haven't talked about yet, is the one that allows the, expands the, I think, definition of trailers and allows for those to be kept on properties. And one of the issues with that is just ensuring that there's proper screening. And that section does, the proposed language does call for those trailers to be screened. But we don't have a definition. So one thing we might think about is, you know, when is something screened? And those are all of our comments. We appreciate your consideration and perhaps inclusion in what you recommend to the Board of Supervisors. And we support you moving these forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further speaker slips. And I see, again, don't see anybody raising their hands. So we're going to close public comment. And Mr. Lengel, it's back to you.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Idelson?
So with the vehicles, they would obviously include motor homes. That would be classified as a vehicle. Wouldn't, would?
Well, let's let Mr. Lengel answer.
I'm sorry. Motor vehicle would encompass things like motor homes, yes.
Okay, then, how about trailers? Both occupant-type trailers, like a, you know, travel trailer versus a luggage, you know, storage-to-haul trailer? All of these other various vehicles?
What's, we're discussing, this particular issue would just address motor vehicles. So other trailers that are not motorized would not be covered by this area, but would be covered by a subsequent section that we'll be discussing.
Mr. Lengel, do you want any? We've had public comment. I think I made notes of, if I can read them, all setbacks, not just the front and side yard. Was there a rationale on that that would say that it shouldn't be all setbacks?
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, the reason we did not prohibit the location within rear yard setback areas is that rear yard setbacks are allowed to have structures within them. Front and side yard setbacks are not allowed. So we were just sort of continuing on with the existing thinking, not allow them within front and sides, but allow it within the rear, since structures are currently allowed within the rear setbacks.
Chair, there's not, there's not five structures allowed in the rear yard?
Mr. Chair, you may have multiple structures within your rear yard, provided they don't take up within Montecito over 30% of the rear yard area.
Really? Well, maybe that's a subject for another amendment another day. I thought the suggestion about being concerned about drainage leakage is a good one, and it should be included. You've got, you require it to be paved. I know in a parking lot or whatever, you have to have the catch basin to catch the oil and those kinds of things. I think to include that would be a good addition.
Yes, we could certainly include a development standard that the storage area be designed to prevent off-site drainage of liquids.
Are you comfortable with that? I did have one comment on the provision which allows the Director to change the height of the solid fence. We do have a development standard, or architectural guideline standard, whichever it is, restricting the height of fences. And I think this is a case, whether it applied just in the rear yard, or if it's on the edge of a property, I think I'd be a little reluctant to just say, go ahead and modify that, exceed the height limitation that we have on fences. I think that would be a mistake. I don't know how the rest of the Commission feels, but, I mean, I could see somebody has a wall on the edge of their property, and that's acting as the screen for the storage. And suddenly, they want to increase it to eight feet, or 10 feet, or whatever. That would violate other, so I think we need to have some provision in there that it doesn't otherwise violate requirements.
Mr. Chair, we could certainly add language that would address that. Any increase in height must still be found
Consistent.
Consistent with the remainder of the Development Code.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it. We can go on to the next item.
Residential second units within the agricultural one zone, this would apply to the Article Two Coastal Zoning Ordinance only. This essentially is proposed to correct an error that was made in 2003, when there was a comprehensive amendment to the Development Standards and Regulations addressing residential second units. For those of you who were around, you may recall that this was done in response to recently enacted state law at that point in time that required that all second units be processed in a ministerial manner within residential zones. And so we proposed several ordinance amendments to do that. And also to address new development standards that were felt to be appropriate, that since we were shifting from a discretionary to a ministerial permit, that should be applied to all second units. Early in the process, we did identify that we should not be allowing second units in addition to other existing dwellings on property, such that it could cause an over-concentration of residences within a certain lot. However, we did wish to make allowances for agriculturally-zoned properties that would commonly, or could have at least dwellings devoted to ag employees, in order to further the agricultural potential of that particular piece of property. And so we did create an exemption from the prohibition for ag-zoned properties that you could have a second unit in addition to an agricultural dwelling. However, for some reason, this didn't, this did not make it into the final drafts, nor was it part of the package submitted to the Coastal Commissions for certification. And so we're now, this came up recently in a particular land use issue, and we're now seeking to correct this by adding that provision back into Article Two appropriately. And again, this would not apply within the Montecito planning area. This would just apply to the coastal zone outside of Montecito. Trying to keep the regulations within Montecito consistent, both within and without, inside the coastal zone.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lengel, I was here in 2003, and I just wanted to ask you, as far as I'm aware, we haven't seen an RSU issued before us. I suspect it's ministerial and not subject to a hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Have, and we had a requirement of at least an acre. Was it two acres? Do you recall what it was here? Before you could have a detached RSU?
Mr. Chair, the standard for having a detached unit is you actually have to have five acres of property.
Five acres.
Within Montecito, yes.
Any sense of how many of those have been built since 2003?
I'm sorry, I don't really have that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Phillips, I don't have that information either, but it's something we can get for you.
I'm just curious. It was always uncomfortable because this so impacts schools, circulation issues. If drawn out to its possible impact, it could be, it could be significant. I always wondered how many have happened. I'll find that out on my own.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I just would like to note that second units are subject to the different impact fees that the county has adopted. And I know this doesn't directly apply to Montecito because of the nature of the school district. But they would have to pay whatever school development fee that the school district has enacted. They are subject to paying traffic impact mitigation fees to the county. They do require separate meters from the water district. So a lot of these tend to provide financial disincentives to create, to construct these second units. So we don't have a whole lot of them coming through the process. But again, as Alice mentioned, we can get the information for you.
Thank you very much.
Substantial conformity amendment process, Montecito Land Use Development Code and Article Two. Within the existing Development Code and the Article Two Zoning Ordinance, there is, there are means by which, in an approved process, that's approved by a conditional use permit or a development plan, may be modified after approval of that project through either a substantial conformity determination or an amendment. Both of these are staff-level processes. Substantial conformity is reviewed and approved or denied by the Director of the Department. There is no notice or appeal of these determinations. And they're meant to apply to very small changes in the project that essentially would not have any, would not make a difference to the scope of that project as it could affect adjacent properties. There is a land use permit, however, that's required to effectuate or to develop that which was approved through the substantial conformity determination. That land use permit is noticed to the neighbors, and that land use permit may be appealed. So there is that sort of fallback check, if you will, that the neighborhood has if they don't agree with a project that's been approved through substantial conformity. That's the existing process. Also existing is the amendment process. Those are utilized for revisions that don't, that cannot be found to substantially conform, but still are small enough that we feel that they can be approved through an amendment, and don't rise to the level of having to go through a whole conditional use permit or development revision, which is essentially starting over again, and involves the whole of the project. Amendments are under the jurisdiction of the Director. However, they are noticed to the surrounding neighborhood, and that decision may be appealed. Within the inland area, to commence the development allowed through an amendment process, you would have to go through a substantial conformity. And in the coastal zone, And in the coastal zone, and this is one of those areas that the, we worked out the process with the Coastal Commission staff, and later certified by the Coastal Commission, that because it costs, because within the Coastal Commission's eyes, the, an amendment rises to the level of constituting development, for which a coastal development needs to be, permit needs to be issued, that a coastal development permit would be required to be processed concurrent with the amendment process. And further that, and I'm sorry, this is getting complicated. If the development that's being proposed is considered appealable development, in other words, it could ultimately be appealed to the Coastal Commission, then there's a public hearing requirement, and the jurisdiction would actually shift from the director to the zoning administrator, outside of Montecito and within Montecito coastal zone, to your commission. If a change to a project cannot be accommodated through either substantial conformity or an amendment, then the, the only other way to do it is through a revision, which essentially is applying for a whole new conditional use permit or development plan.
Oh.
Who's, who's got their light on? Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. If there were an appeal, the appeal could only be initiated by someone directly impacted by this, right? Or could it be impacted by someone, another part of the area?
The, the ordinances require that in order to appeal a project, you have to be an aggrieved person. So, not just somewhat upset, but actually aggrieved with it. And the meaning of aggrieved is that you have to have participated in the process where you could, and don't come in, let's say, at the last hour and say, "I don't like this, I'm going to appeal it." Now, for something like a land use permit, which is required following a substantial conformity, the first time that a person could, would have notice of this is actually at the land use permit stage. And so they would, if they participated in that and appealed that land use permit, would, would qualify as an aggrieved person and could appeal that, that decision.
Commissioner Idelson?
Can you help me here? I'm, I'm moving a little slower, I think, than you are. Not your fault. How are we handling substantial conformity at the moment?
I'm sorry, I should, I should back up and just say that, really, the overall purpose of this amendment is to provide written procedures as to how we do handle these types-
So this is how we are handling?
So, this reflects how we are handling them, them currently-
Okay.
But it puts the, it sort of more or less codifies the process, so it's there in black and white for both interested members of the public, as well as staff, to fall back on.
Thank you. Mr. Lengel, this one, because of the lack of definition of the terms, it gives me real pause. We, we, we had a project, we heard, within the last couple of months. I think County Council has said we're not supposed to bring it up by name, so I will avoid doing that. But it came to us as an amendment. And the only reason that it came to us as an amendment was, at the staff level, they said it was really a substantial conformity issue. But because they thought it might have some controversy attached to it, they bumped it up, and it came to us as an amendment. In my opinion, it was actually a revision to the project. And, and to the best of my knowledge, nowhere do we have anything except subjective judgments that define these terms. Now, I hope I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm unaware of, of any place to go that would give a member of the public, this commission, guidance as to why something was handled as a substantial conformity versus an amendment versus a revision. I just, it just seems so subjective as to be ripe for some form of abuse. So, maybe you can help me out on it.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to. Within the Montecito Development Code and Article Two, they both contain, and I don't know off the top of my head what the appropriate number is, but they both have appendixes that list out guidelines for determining when a proposed change to a project may be found to be in substantial conformity with that approved permit. So that's what staff uses to, to consider an application versus substantial conformity, and determine if they feel that it fits within those guidelines or not. One of the guidelines for substantial conformity is that the project was not subject to substantial public controversy. And so, the feeling is, is that if a project was controversial, then really any proposed change to that project should not be handled strictly at a, at a staff level, but at least should be pushed up to an amendment, and subject to more of a discretionary review of that particular application. As far as amendments go, there is, there is, within the ordinance, the existing language requirements that staff has to consider and determine that what it is that's being proposed through the amendment, either the area where that would occur was analyzed within the SEQA document that was approved for that previous either conditional use permit or development plan, or if it was not analyzed, that it would, could be found to be exempt from SEQA because of the minor, minor nature of the, of what it is that's being proposed. So there are certain guidelines, you know, in effect, that are in the zoning ordinances, and there are findings that have to be made in order to approve these types of applications also.
Well, I guess I'll go back and read that, but I, it, we had an example for, there was actually a change of use that was a component. And, you know, as I said, it was, the inclination was to process it as a substantial conformity issue, because the entire project had been the subject of, of public concern, it was processed as an amendment, even including a, a change of use. So I, anyway, we won't delay you any further.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would just say that, that's why we include sort of the fail-safe measures of being able to appeal. In the case of a substantial conformity, any follow-on land use permit that would be approved for that change. And in the case of an amendment, the, the decision itself-
Okay.
-could be appealed to your commission.
In regards to surface mining and the conditional use permit and zoning clearance process, this would only apply within the Montecito Land Use Development Code. The reason for this is that the Article Two Coastal Zoning Ordinance does not have currently the zoning clearance process. So the zoning clearance process is something that, you'll recall, is just a check by staff to make sure that it complies with the ordinance and/or any previous discretionary permit conditions of approval. There is no notice and appeal of a zoning clearance versus a land use permit, where there is notice, there is possibility of an appeal. The proposal is to change the requirement following approval of a conditional use permit for mining from a land use permit to a zoning clearance, and this is consistent with what the board adopted, I believe in two thousand, some time ago now, several years ago now, where they changed the, the follow-on permit from a land use permit to a zoning clearance for conditional use permits, under the theory that the conditional use permit had received sufficient public scrutiny and discretionary analysis. It itself had been subject to appeals and notice to the public, and that provided that the project that was being built, in reliance on that approved conditional use, use permit, conformed exactly to that project, that there was no need to subject it into another notice and appeal potential through a land use permit, and thus shifted it to a zoning clearance. We forgot the surface mining area of the ordinance, and so this, it corrects that, that oversight. The proposal for temporary uses would apply to both the Montecito Land Use Development Code and Article Two. This would close a loophole that allows an owner of a lot to avoid having to apply, this says minor within Montecito, it would just be a conditional use permit, to use the lot for reception facilities, such as weddings or whatever, by leasing the entire lot to a particular person on a short-term basis. Currently, within Montecito, you, as the owner, can use your property for special events without a permit, provided that you receive no financial remuneration for it, and nobody pays you money to use your property. You're limited to three times a year that you can do this, and you're limited to three hundred people total attendance on the property during any one of those events. What is, and the ordinance also provides, however, that if you want to use your property on a regular basis for a money-making enterprise, such as you own a beautiful estate and you want to rent it out for weddings every weekend, that you can do so, provided that you get an approved, I'm sorry, a conditional use permit approved by the county, or by your commission, essentially. Now, people have found a way to get around this by leasing the whole of the property to a particular person or group of people for, let's say, a day or two days. Then they qualify as tenant, and under the ordinance, therefore, they can use, they can use the property as a tenant without a planning permit, provided that, again, that they don't get paid, they don't pay themselves for doing it, and they don't do it more than three times a year, and they don't have more than three hundred people. So the proposal is that to, to require that in order to qualify as a tenant and be exempt from a permit, that you have to have a minimum of a thirty-day lease on that piece of property. So any short-term rentals for less than thirty days would not qualify you as a tenant exempt from a permit to have a special event. I hope I haven't confused you too much.
Commissioner Idelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess you gave thought to increasing that thirty days to maybe sixty or ninety, and there's a reason you came back to thirty, or?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Idelson, the reason we chose thirty is because that's what the, the county uses as far as in other portions of the county code to determine what constitutes a, a, a short-term rental versus, versus not a short-term rental, like I should say, and when, for example, in the case of, of motels, when the transient occupancy tax is levied.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, it was just something that appeared in other parts of the county code. We felt it was appropriate to acquire at least a thirty-day lease period. We felt that this would, would solve the problem, at least as we're experiencing now, for those situations where somebody rents out their property for a day, and then that person holds the wedding, and the neighbors could be impacted. If, if you have to lease the property for thirty days, then at least has the, at least has the, the chilling effect of the owner could only do this, let's say, twelve times a year. But, you know, you could include, you could include the, the lease period if you wanted to. There's, there's nothing magic about thirty days, except that it's used in other parts of the county code.
Now, enforcement, because usually these things happen so fast that it's already over with by the time you, you try to do enforcement. Have you thought that aspect of it through?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, enforcement's always a challenge, especially on these situations where, like you say, they occur in a day, maybe they occur in a Saturday. Currently, there's no way to call the county and say, "They're having a wedding next to my house." They've had a wedding, you know, every Saturday for the last month. Do something about it. However, we can, after the fact, go back, investigate the situation, and if we determine that a violation of the ordinance has occurred, there are, there are remedies that we can pursue to prevent it from occurring in the future.
Okay, now, if, if a person used that facility on a regular basis, let's say, once a month, and it's, and they use the word charitable purposes, does that give them any special? Now, I'm not, I'm not saying that they rented it, but I know of places in, in the community that are used regularly, with an impact on the neighbors, with an impact on parking, where they move the cars as much as a half-mile away and line them up on a street, on both sides of the street, and this goes on every month and has for a number of years and is accelerating. Is there anything in here that would preclude them from continuing?
Well, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Idelson, if, if a property owner is allowing their property to be reused for, let's say, a charitable event, a fundraiser for some organization, and they're not being paid by that organization-
Mm-hmm.
-within Montecito, they're still limited to the three-time-per-year cap-
Okay.
-that's existing in the ordinance now. So if they're doing it more than that period, more than that frequency, then that constitutes a violation of the current standards.
And the three times a year would be for how many people would that-
Three hundred people per event.
Okay, now, violation of that, if someone's keeping track and there is a violation, would they come again to zoning?
That's correct. They would file a zoning enforcement complaint with our department, and we would investigate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. Just speaking for a moment in support of our nonprofits, it's very difficult now to raise money for the charities and the nonprofits that many times do the work that public agencies used to do. So I hope that Montecito will understand that we are given some leeway to using our estates for these events, as long as they're quiet and, and respectful of the neighbors. I wouldn't want people to think that they can't use their property for special events for, for nonprofits.
Well, Madam Chair and Commissioner Burrows, the thrust of this amendment is really to address for-profit enterprises. Now, I understand your concern about, for nonprofits, but the, you know, when we amended the temporary use section of the ordinance back when, I'm trying to think how many years ago that was now, and I believe it went through this commission for review, that this commission determined that the three-time-per-year limit was appropriate for the Montecito area. So, if you want, we can always relook at that and maybe increase it to something higher, but that's a story for another day, essentially.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. Could you tell us what the existing limit is? It, it isn't three hundred maximum.
Yes, it is.
So the three times, you're saying it, it applies, once you've, once you've reached three hundred people, the three times applies? Or it's a minimum, right?
I'm sorry. You may only have three events per year.
Period.
Period.
Well-
Under, under the existing standards, you may only have three events per year, and each event may only have up to three hundred people.
So I have to cancel that dinner party, my fourth dinner party of the year?
If you have enough friends showing up, yes.
Enough friends? How many?
If, if it qualifies as a special event, and you're inviting a plethora of people onto the property, then, yes, you, you would not be able to have a fourth event.
So now we're, this is subject to special event definition?
Correct.
So a dinner party is not a special event?
No, you may have weekly dinner parties in your house for your close circle of friends, let's just say, that's not associated with any type of fundraiser or thing like that, or situation like that.
So what distinguishes, at, where does, where does the existing limit come in? You have to, it has to be more than your friends, but under three hundred?
It looks like Noel's looking it up, but I can say that in the winery regulations, I believe the lower limit is thirty, so that if you, if you have fewer than thirty, it doesn't count as an event. If you're above thirty, it does, but we'll see-
Thirty, huh?
That's, I'm saying that specifically for wineries, but we'll see if there's a specific- but we'll see if there's a specific number for temporary events more generally.
Well, it says maximum, it says maximum attendance. I don't know where the, where it begins, where the three times starts being looked at. It may be 30.
Commissioner Idelson?
So, okay, maybe I, maybe you are looking at that number now to determine is 30 a realistic figure for a residential home as not being considered a, one of these impacts?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Idelson, I mean, I can say clearly that the intent isn't to address things like a small gathering in your home. It's intended to address bigger events than that, and we're looking to see if the number 30 is used again, or if there's another number used.
So maybe you can just disregard that whole issue. It's not, it's a non-issue.
Well, neighbors could be upset with the chairman having continual dinner parties, and, you know how he is, and it might come under here, that's what I'm worried about.
Okay, I understand.
First of all, we have to have somebody complain. And then, secondly, it has to be something other than a dinner party.
And then they have to be close personal friends, and that's a, that's a big issue, too.
Mr. Langle, let's keep going here.
Mr. Chair, and trying to answer your question, I'll read to you from the Book of Zoning. Under, where it talks about charitable and other non-commercial functions, what the existing language says, "The use of a lot for charitable and other non-commercial functions, where the tenant or owner of the lot receives no remuneration, including fundraisers, parties, receptions, weddings, and other similar gatherings, is exempt from a permit requirement. However, the following development standard shall apply. The use of the lot for charitable functions does not exceed three times within the same calendar year. The number of persons present at the event at any one time does not exceed 300." So to the extent that your dinner parties, shall we say, constitute charitable functions, you would be regulated by this section of the ordinance. In other words, people are attending dinner, they are contributing money to some worthy cause, they're having a good time, and you like doing this, and so you schedule them every weekend. If that's the case, then yes, it would be covered by, and controlled by this ordinance. If you're just having a series of dinner parties for your friends, then it's not regulated.
Mr. Langle, let me ask a question. I want to throw charitable events, and I want to throw a half a dozen. I have no complaints from my neighbors, but nevertheless, I want to have a half a dozen of them. What do I need to do in order to be able to do that legally?
Currently, you would have to amend the Montecito Land use Development Code. Like this, I'm not coming to your party.
So I can't do it if I wanted, I can't do it by getting a minor CUP?
Mr. Chair, that's correct. There's no provision to increase the number through a conditional use permit process, which is not a bad idea. So you may be seeing that coming to your commission in the future as an amendment, but... Too many parties as there is, I think.
Okay, that's, Mr. Idelson?
Okay, on parking. I have, I know of a party that is impacted at least once, sometimes twice a month, by excessive amount of cars that are parked right next to the house, that are activated in the middle of the night and removed, and in and out with parking attendants parking them, not, not drivers parking them, but they're shuttled down from a, from a party. And the party is operating about a half a mile away. What, if any, relief does that person have? And how would a person go about, is there any enforcement to help that person out without calling the Highway Patrol or something like that? Do you have any zoning issues involved here? Because they're, they're off-site parking, and it's, but it's on a public county road.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Idelson, if the parking was associated with some sort of event that was regulated by the Development Code, then we could address it in that manner. However, if that event is not subject to regulation, then the zoning really has no way to address it, and they would have to contact the Highway Patrol if they felt they were, if an unsafe situation was being created. Or they could pursue through the courts some sort of a nuisance complaint against the property owner who's causing the problem also.
Perhaps it is, in all things, the good neighbor policy, registering your problem is a good place to start. Mr. Langle, let's go on to the next one.
We're almost done. In regards to trailers, and this would amend, again, both the Development Code and Article Two. Currently, the Development Code and Article Two only talk about the storage of trailers as a use accessory, I'll use that term again, to a residential use for those that are capable of human habitation, is the way the ordinance terms it. Primarily, you know, a travel trailer, an RV, something like that, that you're allowed to keep it on your lot, you know, on your lot which you live on, without a permit. Now, what we discovered in our travels around the county and through, again, zoning enforcement investigations, that there are people who like to keep other types of trailers on their property beyond those that are, you know, maybe used for, as RVs or travel trailer, things of that nature, in regard, and especially those that may be used to haul motorcycles, jet skis. I know one person that has the honor of dubious pleasure of having to keep the trailer that hauls the out-rear canoes along, around the various races, and other trailers that use haul materials, that, you know, there's really no direct allowance in the Development Code at this point in time to provide for this, although we do recognize that this is a fairly prevalent situation. So the proposal is to allow the storage of trailers in addition to those used for habitation when there is a residence on the property. It would include trailers used for hauling materials and vehicles, such as jet skis, motorcycles. The normal, the existing requirement that they be screened from abutting streets would still apply. And the standards also specify that it may not be parked or stored in the required front setback areas or in required parking spaces. It would still have to meet the existing standards for travel trailers or RVs, that it could not be any wider than eight and a half feet in width, could not be higher than 13 and a half feet, and it could not be longer than 40 feet in length. And then, oops. And the underlying language on the screen, there were some questions brought up previously, because right now, the height measurement is to the, specifies to the roof of the trailer. And this was really contemplated more in regards to an RV or something of that nature. Because we're expanding the use, the number, or the types of trailers that can be utilized, or can be kept on property that may not have roofs, we wanted to change the definition also to address that situation. So the 13 and a half feet would therefore apply to the trailer itself and anything stored on that trailer. So if you have a trailer that's fairly low to the ground, but you're keeping a rather large object on it, the 13, that may not have a roof, the trailer, the 13 and a half feet would still apply to that type of situation as well. The reason we proposed previously, or the reason the existing code specifies to the roof of the trailer was because we did not want to include things that one can find on top of RVs, such as antennas or refrigeration units, because they don't cause that much of a visual impact. So again, the revised definition would specify that it's measured from the surface upon which the vehicle stands, does not include antennas or air conditioning units.
Mr. Idelson?
Question, do the motorcycles under the first category fall under the motor vehicles if they're licensed? Were we had limits of five, or is this treated separately?
This would be treated separately.
Okay. Whether they were licensed or otherwise? You would make a distinction between a licensed motorcycle for use on the pavement road versus people that have motorcycles or whatever it is for dirt use?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Idelson, I think, well, in the previous section, we were talking about registered with the DMV. So off-road motorcycles still must be registered, but registered for off-road use only. So they're licensed per se.
Yeah, I'm talking about a licensed motorcycle, like, to travel on the road with. Regular DMV license, regular, regular thing. The off-road is a separate deal. That would be kind of like, might be certified with the Forest Service or whatever, but, but I'm talking about a licensed motor, motorcycle for driving on the freeway or roadway. Is that considered a motor vehicle under your motor vehicle classification, or you're not including it in the motor vehicle classification?
We hadn't, we were primarily addressing larger vehicles in the, in the motor vehicle, parking limitations. I hadn't thought about how it would affect motorcycles, to tell you the truth. I'll have to look into that further.
Any questions or comments? We did have the comment from Victoria Green about the issue of the screening. Perhaps you want to address that, Mr. Langle?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we're not proposing any additional language at this time beyond that, which is in the ordinance itself, which is admittedly somewhat vague and ambiguous, and just says that the trailer has to be screened from view from the, from public streets, essentially. Delving deeper into screening and what's appropriate would be a much larger issue, and we're not prepared to take it on at this point in time.
Okay. Are you saying that the word "screen" is already in the ordinance?
Yes, there's already, there's already the requirement that the...
So this is not a change to that, okay?
We're just proposing to keep the existing language regarding screening.
Mr. Idelson?
I'm sorry. Could you give me a little background in how you got up to 13 and a half feet for the trailer to allow that much height?
Mr. Chair, this one actually predates my involvement in the zoning ordinance and developing amendments. I believe that at whatever point in time that we put this into the ordinance, we did some sort of a survey of what was an appropriate number to use for the normal RV that may be traveling the roadway, and that was, felt to be an appropriate height limit. But I can't give you any other information beyond that.
I think, you know, I, my take on that is, Mr. Langle, is historically, you know, I think if you go out and actually find out what a trailer, you know, or an RV, there's like, there really is an appropriate design to that, you know, 'cause, I mean, 'cause obviously I've got, you know, a permitted trailer, you know, and, and as is many people in my part of the community, and they're very consistent, you know, because it's just the, it really is the amount of wheel, and then the height of the trailer, which is usually, in my case, the trailer is probably eight feet tall, its body, plus whatever the wheel is. You know, it, that, you know, I mean, we don't see the design of trailers being that high, you know. So I think that that would be, that's pretty, that's a pretty consistent number to most of the trailers, at least in my, and RVs, in my part of the community, where it's like, that's what it, they just are that way, you know.
Moving on to wastewater, which is the last area that we'll be discussing. Again, affects both the Montecito Land use and Development Code and Article Two. The purpose of this particular amendment is to define an alternative wastewater treatment system consistent with how the Environmental Health Services Division of Public Health Department treats them. Currently, in the ordinance, if you're doing a conventional, non-alternative system, you're required to have, within the coastal zone, a CDP for installation. Outside the coastal zone, it's exempt. There's no permit from zoning required. You still do need to get a permit from EHS, however. However, the codes do require, though, that what is termed as an alternative system, that a conditional use permit is required to allow that. And there's been, over the years, some confusion by both staff of EHS and the Planning Department, and the public, as to what constitutes an alternative system, and thus requires that a conditional use permit be processed. So in working with the Environmental Health Services Division, we've narrowed the scope of what is considered to be an alternative wastewater treatment system to either a mound-type system, where you essentially build up the property, build up the ground level and put your leach field within that, or an evaporation system, which essentially is just the liquid waste evaporates. EHS considers both of those to be alternative systems, worthy of higher scrutiny. However, they don't feel that certain non-conventional state-of-the-art systems need to be given that amount of scrutiny. And so the proposal is then to define an alternative wastewater system as just those that utilize a mound or an evaporation transportation, transpiration system.
Mr. Idelson?
On the permitting of these alternate treatment systems, Health Department gets involved in this, do they, for?
Yes, Commissioner Idelson, very much so. The primary permit that you actually get from the county for a individual wastewater treatment system is from the Public Health Department.
The issuing of the permit, then, is in conjunction, the Health Department plus, plus your Planning Department?
That's correct. If it requires a permit from both departments, typically...
So you've got engineering. Now, the problem I have is that these things are failing so frequently in Montecito. It's amazing, especially seasonally, when we have these high rains, as we did this time. We had it again, we've had it three times since I've been there, where I've had raw sewage and foaming coming onto my property from as much as a mile away. And I brought that to the attention of county, but I know that other people are, too. The soil conditions out there are not very conducive to any kind of a leach field, although they are permitted, they just make them alternate. But the mound system, I guess, has some merit there. But I'm quite concerned that we don't encourage, we need to encourage more people to hook up to existing sewers wherever they are. And if we make it easy to do an evaporation... And if we make it easy to do an evaporation system or some other system and we're light on that, I know you're talking about the process, not the conditions of it, but I'm really, it's a, it's a big issue with me because I know there's a lot of failure out there and we should correct it, and more people should be required to hook up to the commercial sewer. In, in communities that I've worked in before like Riverside, their conditions were actually quite severe in the mountain areas. We had percolating soils up there that percolated pretty well.
Mr. Lengel, is there, if the Montecito Sanitation District has a line in the area, is a new project required to connect to that?
We have to go with standards.
If there's within so many feet?
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I don't know the exact regulation, but if there is a, if there is service available within so many feet of the proposed project site, then they are required to hook up to the sanitary district.
Okay. So, this, this really is a fallback position if the sanitation service is not available?
That's correct. If they are going to, if they are legally allowed to proceed with a individual wastewater treatment system, then this would just specify that the types of systems that require the conditional use permit are either the evapotranspiration systems or the mound type systems.
Okay. Any further questions? I don't see any. I'll tap one more time, any public comment? I don't see any, so we'll close.
Just, Mr. Chair, just to let you know that this item will be going to the County Planning Commission on May the 4th, a week from today, and then the first, the, would go to the Board of Supervisors on June 21st.
Okay. If I understand it, the staff report correctly, you're asking for two, two actions. The first action is basically to make the findings and SEQA and all that to support what you've done as it relates to the Montecito Land Use Development Code. And the second action would be to essentially do the same thing to recommend to the County Planning Commission that they adopt the work that you've done. If that understanding is correct, I'd like to make a motion, is it, is my understanding correct?
Mr. Chair, your understanding is correct because you're, because this, we're proposing an amendment to both the Montecito Land Use and Development Code where your commission has primary review advisory authority over. Your action would be in that particular instance to adopt the findings and recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the ordinance for the Article II zoning ordinance because you sort of sit below, I'll use the term-
How about parallel?
Parallel, or in conjunction with the County Planning Commission. Your motion would be to adopt the findings and recommend that the County Planning Commission adopt the findings and make the recommendation to the County Board of Supervisors. It's probably better to, well, I, to me, it'd be clear to do it in two separate motions, but you can try it in one if you want to.
Mr. Idelson?
Yeah, I still have a couple of issues before the motion possibly-
All right.
-that we could consider. First of all, on this, I, okay, generalized in one, I would like to know how many of these, these issues we shifted from the MPC over to the zoning administrator? Specifically, which ones are we talking about?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, within the Montecito planning, plan area, the only shifts would be from the Montecito Planning Commission to the director. The zoning administrator only acts outside the Montecito plan area because your body sits as the zoning administrator within the Montecito plan area.
Okay. Then, the other one is this extension for financial reasons. Basically, that doesn't come into play until after they've had these other two, first, the first permit is a year, is it? And then, there's a two-year and a two-year extension, was that?
Mr. Chair, the way that was adopted by the board is that they could avail themselves of the financial hardship time exemption, exemption as the, I'm sorry, extension, as the first extension.
As the first, not as the last?
Not as a subsequent or last, correct.
Okay, so it had to be used as the first?
It could be.
Could be, but can it be used as the third extension or at the very end?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Idelson, yes, it could be. It could be in addition to all the other extensions that are currently available within the development code.
But as a practical matter, that won't happen because it sunsets at the end of next year.
Yes, that's essentially correct because, like I say, it's, that section is going to expire in December of 2012, so.
Okay, then where are we in 2013? Let's, let's say we start a project, comes to us in 2013, take me through the extensions.
2013, assuming that the hardship exemption sunsets and is not extended by the board. Under what we're proposing is that a land use permit, once it's approved, would have a new one-year timeframe in which to have that permit issued, and that if you are not able to do that within that one year, you could apply for and receive for good cause a one-year time extension to that approved land use permit. So, an approved land use permit could last for up to two years. And if it was not issued within that two-year period of time, then it would die and go away. A land use permit once issued would have an initial lifespan of two years, and this is the existing regulations, and could have a time extension of one year on top of that. So, what we're proposing is that approval for one year, time extension for one year, issuance initially good for two years, time extension for one year, so a five-year total lifespan of that land use permit.
No more for, for financial on top of the five?
Not after 2012 unless the board decides that they want to extend that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just point out that in terms of the lifespan of a land use permit, the changes that we're talking about, it really doesn't result in an increase. What we're doing is clarifying that the approval itself has an end date.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, I'm, I'm going to take a stab at a motion. On your, your two-point, item 2.1, which is case ending in 00013, that we adopt the findings, we recommended the Board of Supervisors related to SEQA, and we adopt a resolution recommending to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt the ordinance so referred with two modifications. The first modification is adding the drainage requirement to the 700 square foot maximum square, 700 square foot pad, and the, adding the requirement that the, any increase in height to a wall or fence be otherwise consistent with the rest of our requirements.
Mr. Chair, also, I would like the motion to include that the revision in regards to the indemnification to change the current language from owner slash applicant to owner and/or applicant, and as well as the revision that we talked about to the height allowance for trailers to measure to the, to change it from measuring to the top of the roof to essentially measuring to the top of whatever, anything, the trailer and anything stored on the trailer.
Okay.
And then, there are a number of very minor revisions and corrections to the ordinance that basically just to have it more, to have it correctly reflect the sections that are being identified and correct some underlining and strike through problems, that I didn't walk you through each and every one of them.
Consider those included in the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Philip seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Now, we'll move to case number 00014, which is essentially our finding, findings including SEQA findings, and we recommend to the County Planning Commission that the County Planning Commission adopt the findings for approval and recommend to the Board of Supervisors. We recommend to the County Planning Commission that the County Planning Commission recommend to the board related to SEQA, and the last component of it is the, are the elements of the ordinance. There is one, with one modification to that, and that would be related to the drainage component on the 700 square feet. The height would not apply here because it's not in Montecito. It's, what we're recommending is, well, it would, it would have to apply because it's coastal as well. So, that, plus the other refinements that you added in the previous motion, Mr. Lengel?
Correct. So, that would be the drainage requirement, the height of the fencing increase consistent with the code, change owner slash applicant to owner and/or applicant, to change the trailer height restriction, and to make all the other minor little corrections to the ordinance.
I so move, and if I can have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Commissioner Burrows. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Well done. And I believe since we have, we're just at noon, we have one small item left, and I think you're still on, so unless anybody is, has an emergency break they need, let's, let's cover that one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Villa Lobos, you want to read it into the record, please, first?
Thank you, Mr., I was just going to interject. Thank you for your consideration of the ordinance amendment package. Yeah, I knew it was a lot to cover, and I appreciate your patience, and your questions are very helpful in exploring it.
Thank you for a very clear presentation.
The following is the request of the Planning and Development Department that the Planning Commission receive a briefing on case number 11, ORD 11, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 land division of the Santa Barbara County Code to add procedures regarding the processing of applications for certificates of compliance and conditional certificates of compliance.
Never mind about it. Dane Brammaged?
I promised to be brief. Yes, members of the Montecito Planning Commission, as Mr. Villa Lobos read into the record, this ordinance amendment for your consideration is in regards to amending Chapter 21, the, of the County Code, the land divisions portion to address processing procedures for certificates of compliance, including both unconditional certificates and conditional certificates of compliance. This is a briefing ordinance because actually, under the existing Chapter 21 provisions, your commission, as well as the County Planning Commission, is not an advisory body to the County Board of Supervisors, so that they will be the ones acting to approve the amendment without an official recommendation from your commission. But we did want to bring this before you so, to apprise you of what we're proposing and to listen to any comments or concerns you might have, and if, as appropriate, incorporate those into the staff report for the board. So, the purpose of the hearing is today is to receive the report and then again to provide comments as appropriate. By way of background, the California Subdivision MAP Act provides a process by which a property owner may establish the legality of a piece of property for the purposes of sale, lease, or finance through the recordation of either a certificate of compliance or a conditional certificate of compliance. Unconditional certificates are used for lots that were not created by a subdivision map but were legally done and complied with whatever the subdivision regulations were in effect at that time from both the state and local ordinances. A conditional certificate of compliance is required when a lot was not created legally, was not created in compliance with the subdivision MAP Act and our Chapter 21 subdivision ordinance. I would like to point out that the county must record either a conditional certificate or an unconditional certificate, provided that the person requesting the certificate is the legal owner of the property and can demonstrate that the property is a separate piece of property from its neighbors. At this point, Chapter 21 does not have any processing procedures for certificates of compliance. This has caused some confusion by both staff and applicants as to where they enter the process and how it proceeds. The only thing Chapter 21 does include presently is that it provides that the zoning administrator is the decision maker for conditional certificates, and within the Montecito planning area, planning area, that would shift to the Montecito Planning Commission who acts as the zoning administrator for the county within Montecito. This amendment would provide those procedures for both conditional and unconditional certificates. The process would begin with the county surveyor who would review the application and determine if an unconditional certificate or conditional certificate was required based on the parcel history, how it was created, when it was created, what were the rules and regulations in effect at that time. If they just, and their decision could be appealed to the Board of Supervisors. The decision of the county surveyor to require either a conditional or a non, or an unconditional could be appealed to the board. Some people have, where the county surveyor has required a conditional certificate, recently there've been a few appeals to the Board of that decision. If an unconditional certificate is required, then the county surveyor merely processes that application and records the certificate with a county recorder. It's a fairly ministerial process, provided all the necessary documents and the fees are paid. However, if a conditional certificate is required, then the Planning Commission Department will process the application from that point forward. This includes review and compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act since conditional certificates of compliance are deemed to be a discretionary action. The zoning administrator or the Montecito Planning Commission, if appropriate, will review the application as part of a notice public hearing and will approve the conditional certificate subject to conditions of approval, hence the name conditional certificate. These conditions, the scope of them are limited by state law to those conditions that would have been appropriate to a subdivision at the point in time that the owner acquired their interest in the property, that the person seeking this certificate acquired their interest in the property. So, essentially, if a project was, if a lot was illegally created, then we then have the chance through the certificate process to apply those conditions that would have been apply, that would have applied had the lot gone through the normal subdivision We're proposing that the ZA decision may be appealed to the County Planning Commission, or in the case of a certificate processed by your commission, that your decision would go to the Board of Supervisors directly. After any appeal is rung out, then the county surveyor would record the certificate with the approved conditions. And I- And I would mention that this amendment to Chapter 21 also, currently under Chapter 21, appeals of the zoning administrator outside, decisions outside the Montecito planning area go directly to the Board of Supervisors. This amendment would also change that, to have those appeals go first to the County Planning Commission and then to the board, consistent with all how other applications are treated within the development code and Article II zoning ordinance. This will also go to the County Planning Commission as a briefing on May the 4th. Because the county and the Montecito Planning Commission are not acting as a, as an advisory agency on this amendment, it requires two readings at the board. The first reading or introduction will be on June the 21st, followed on July 7th by the second, or adoption, reading. That concludes my presentation.
Are there any immediate questions for Mr. Lengel? Then I will open it up to public comment. I have one speaker slip from Victoria Green at the Montecito.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Victoria Green, I'm just going to speak on behalf of myself because the association didn't have these materials in time to do our, our normal review. But one, one point I wanted to raise, you know, particularly these conditional certificates of compliance are pretty funny animals. I think, you know, earlier, you don't see them very often, but you have seen some. And what the county's authority is on these is somewhat limited, but you do have the ability to, to condition. What I would suggest is that what's here in terms of conditions of approval, what this says is that the decision maker in compliance with the MAP Act may impose any conditions that would be applicable. You know, and that's going to depend on who the owner is at the time that they come forward, whether they were the illegal subdivider, or there's somebody who's an innocent subsequent owner. But, but what is missing from this is any kind of finding that, that your body would have to make to approve the conditional certificate of compliance. And I think that if there were some kinds of, some kind of finding requirement that would help you support conditions you imposed, it would be really useful. So I would suggest that there be some sort of finding that would have to be made, that conditions have been imposed that would ensure that the proposal is, conforms to the community plan and the ordinance requirements in effect at the time of subdivision, or else it would be at the time the real property was acquired by the current owner for an innocent subsequent buyer. Because otherwise, a future commission may impose conditions to address those things. There's nothing that really compels them to do so. So I'd suggest that maybe you ask staff whether they might incorporate some findings and what they move forward to the Board of Supervisors. Any questions?
No, I think your, your point was very clear. And you, I misread the sheet. You did not indicate that you were speaking on behalf of the association. Mr. Lengel, would you like to respond to Ms. Green's suggestions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Montecito Commission. Traditionally, when the county zoning administrator or your planning commission has been reviewing and approving certificates of compliance, there really hasn't been any requirement for findings being adopted. There's no mention of, to my knowledge, within the MAP Act of the review authority, having to adopt findings. And I guess my problem is that by requiring that findings be adopted, you're sort of saying that if you can't make the findings, you can't approve the certificate, and that's not an allowable outcome under the MAP Act. So my recommendation is to not include any findings that have to be adopted by the review authority.
I understand the point that you're making, but I also understand the point that Ms. Green's making. Since we don't see these very often, as a matter of fact, I cannot remember seeing one, although I can think of one.
Yes, you can.
We're kind of left in the, in the dark. I mean, we don't have much, much guidance or much institutional memory here. We can rely on, on staff to do that, but it seems like there's a need to give us a context in which we're processing it, and maybe that comes with a staff report, but...
Mr. Chair, yes. I was just going to suggest that the staff report that's prepared for both your commission and the zoning administrator is very comprehensive into information regarding when the lot was created, what were the regulations in effect at that time, and then what are the necessary conditions of approval to ensure that that lot is developed, consistent with those recommendations. And certainly, the regulations that do apply at that time, if there was one in effect, would be something like the comprehensive plan or general plan, and those are routinely included as conditions of the certificate, if, if necessary, to control the development of a lot in a manner that conforms with those adopted plans, regulations. So I don't know, I think implicit in the staff recommendation as to what the scope of the, of the conditions are, there is more or less the, the finding, if you will, that development of the lot, based on those conditions, will conform to the adopted plans and policies. I don't know that you need a, a finding that your body would have to adopt that would more or less say the same thing.
If we, if we had a requirement to make a finding that the, we have imposed the conditions upon, for development, that would have existed or do exist, depending on the circumstances, then the absence and the ability to make that finding would say staff's got to go back and do additional work, would it not?
Certainly, your, your commission has the ability to, to say to staff that these conditions aren't sufficient to address the plans and policies that are brought to bear on this particular certificate. If you feel that the conditions, you know, let's say the property was, was illegally created in January of 2012, or, you know, 2011, let's say, such that all the current plans and policies and development standards in the Montecito Development Code, et cetera, are applicable to this certificate, and you review the list that the Planning Commission staff has prepared, and you find that they're inadequate to do that, then you can either suggest your own conditions or certainly direct the staff to add those conditions so as to be able to determine that that's the case.
Commissioner Phillips?
By not calling for findings, do you, do you mean that I could say in the future, I just don't like certificate of compliances, I'm not going to tell you why, and I'm going to vote against it? Or, make it worse, I like all certificates of compliance, I don't have any particular reason why I like this one, I'm just voting for it. That's attackable. We need findings as a matter of law. Is it that you find it implicit that we will make findings, or is it that we don't need to make findings in this case?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I guess my suggestion is that you don't need to make findings. Based on my history of having acted as the county zoning administrator and having reviewed and approved a number of conditional certificates over that 12-year period, that my belief is that the staff work that's done to prepare the proposed conditions is, is very thorough and comprehensive, and covers all those situations that might crop up as part of a certificate that would need to be controlled through some sort of conditions of approval of that certificate.
Ms. Green, if you want to, you're welcome to participate, but I haven't closed public comment, I don't think. Mr. Lengel, I would ask you a question. Well, now I'm waiting.
Thank you. I guess just what I wanted to say was that I don't think it's a question of whether staff's going to put forward conditions that are appropriate. It's more a question of what are decision makers going to do with those conditions that have been proposed or may come up in the process of the public hearing? And I think that if there's a requirement for a finding, then the decision makers are more compelled to impose the conditions that would be appropriate, rather than to say, oh, well, Joe illegal subdivider doesn't really want this condition, so, you know, we're not going to require it of him. So that's the purpose of the finding, is that it makes the decision maker step up to the plate and be able to say, yes, these conditions do go far enough, or, or we, we have imposed the conditions that we can legally, that will maximize compliance with ordinances and community plan, that kind of, that's, that's the point.
Mr. Phillips, you're still on. Do you want to follow on?
I must be, I must be going in another direction. I, I don't, I don't believe we can act and direct anyone to do anything without appropriate findings. I may be wrong. I just don't know what else, how else we could, how else our decisions could be supported if not for that.
Mr. Eilson?
Maybe some of my questions might open the door a little more. Okay, here's, here's what I would like to ask for Mr. Lengel to help me with, and that is, okay, so you have a certificate of compliance, and people come into you with certificates of compliance. What are the major surprises that an applicant gets just because they have a certificate of compliance, and they come to planning and they're ready to do something? What's the, what's the first big hurdle that they realize, they didn't realize?
Probably the first big hurdle that we know about is that people buy a piece of property that has a recorded conditional certificate. They read those conditions, and they think, ah, this is all I have to comply with, which is not the case. And perhaps this will speak to your question or concern. As I briefly went over in the beginning of my presentation, all the conditional certificate compliance does is establish the legality of the lot for the purpose of sale, lease, or finance. In other words, if you, if you have an illegally created lot, then you really can't sell or lease it or, or finance it until you've some, until you've achieved or received a conditional certificate. Now, the second bite of the apple, so to speak, that former county councils have used in discussing certificates, is that you're still subject, if you're applying for a house, so to speak, of all the zoning regulations that would apply to the construction of that residence, including any development plan or development policies of the comprehensive and community plans as well. So it doesn't get you out of the normal permit review process, it just lets you in the front door.
It lets you in the front door. So very likely, you could end up finding that, ooh, you can't build the size house you thought you could, or, or maybe very, very limited, or you have some, some leeway. But it's really a means to convey a parcel through an escrow to another party. Is that the primary reason for a certificate?
Yes. Essentially, the, the main reason for a certificate is to establish that it's a legal lot, so you can sell it, so you can lease it, so you can, you know, finance it.
Thank you.
It doesn't guarantee you anything beyond that.
Good. Thank you.
All right. So it, it doesn't get into the building or the design or any of those things, it just legalizes the lot?
Yes, the certificate itself legalizes the lot. Now, the conditions may then further control how the lot is developed, but they don't supersede or countermand any of the normal zoning regulations that would apply. So for example, if you, a person bought an illegal lot back in 1955, and in 1956, got a certificate of compliance, a conditional certificate of compliance for that lot, and that, conditions were very sparse, shall we say, and didn't, you know, have any relation to the Montecito community plan, and you walk in the door tomorrow with your, you know, 1950s vintage certificate with very few conditions, you're still going to be subject to all the existing current permits or permit requirements and development standards. It doesn't get you out of those at all.
So conditions could be set.
Well...
Different.
If we go to a small lot.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. So when you apply for a land use permit to actually build something on the lot, then a whole, another set of conditions could be applied.
Allison?
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that to address this issue, we discuss with county council, the ability and/or the need to include a finding for the approval of conditional COCs relative to the adequacy of identified conditions.
What does that mean, the last, last part of that?
So...
Condition properly, we make that finding and therefore approve?
I'm suggesting that, I realize that, so we're talking about that the development of the lot is another issue, and it happens later. But with respect to the determination at the time a COC is approved, as to what conditions relate to it, that we would discuss with county council whether we should, we have the ability and/or the need to have a finding saying, yes, at the time we're approving the COC, these are the conditions that apply and they're adequate.
So...
Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chairman. So in that case, your department, our county council, would be deciding on the conditions?
No.
No, we'd be, no, I'm just saying that we would, as a part of the COC process, we could have a, include a finding for the decision makers to make, saying, yes, we, we agree, these are the, these conditions are necessary and adequate, given the project history, as Noel was saying, of when the lot was created.
If I understand you correctly, you're suggesting that now you consult with, with county council as to the advisability of including that in this ordinance amendment?
That's correct.
Yes, okay. I think that, that seems fine to me. Others? Okay, I think that...
And that we may conclude that it's either we have no ability to require a finding like that, or that we don't think it's necessary, but we'll at least look into it.
I would, I would add, just as one commissioner, that it makes me a little uncomfortable to, to sign off on a conditional certificate of compliance without having gone through the specifics and having made that kind of finding. They may come back and say it's fine without it, but it just, it just feels like it could be a little incomplete. We might be acting on something we don't really completely understand if we're not forced to do that, so. Any rate, are there any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Eilson?
But we have been doing certificates in the past without any findings, have we?
That's correct.
Right, that's the, that was the point of the comment from, from Ms. Green.
Anything further from staff or from the commission? In that case, I think we have probably concluded our business for today, and thank you all.
Thank you.